All right, so we will open the meeting for, what is today, October 6th, 2020, Planning Board Meeting. This is being conducted pursuant to the Governor's Orders via Zoom, which allows such meetings. This is also being recorded.
Well, I turned it down.
We are, we are recording it. If anybody else is recording it, that is fine. You just need to let us know. So is there anybody else who is recording this? Okay. So we will start. Let me just say, and I'll say this a couple of times as we go along here. If you could, if you haven't already, we're basically using the chat right now as a sign-in sheet. So if you could go and put your name and address into the chat, that would be great. If you have any issues with it, you can certainly speak up as, you know, we go along here. But if you can try to get into that chat and throw your address and name in there, that'd be great. All right, 7 o'clock, Town Planners Report. Alan?
Since our last meeting, it's been pretty busy working from home. I've continued conversations with the interested parties in regards to 302 Granville Road, a 24-acre parcel. But the thing is, it needs, it doesn't have frontage on a town road. There is a, there is a 60-foot wide easement that was allotted for the lot. The road was supposed to have been put in approximately 20 years ago, but it never happened. So there, there's a lot of interest in that.
Is this about?
Also, I've had conversations with George, George from the owner of the Santos Pizza, number 581, and he, he would like to either revamp or start a new building. There's an existing home separate from the, the strip mall where the restaurant is, and he would like to convert that into approximately 4,000-square-foot base with a second floor, either to be used as a mixed use or another business. So we've, we've been going through, he's, he's going to be filing a formal application after going to the ZBA, because in that zone, it is now allowed to have residences on a second floor if it's a, a business on the first floor. Also, I've been having correspondence with the attorney from the, on the Greens on the east side of College Highway, and he'd like a letter for clarification. There's a 14-acre parcel that was left vacant. And I believe at one time, we thought it was possibly going to be, going to do a Zoom change. And what it is, is they are now selling the land to Mr. Wally, and it's going to be used for agricultural use. Anybody going by it might have, might have seen that the snack shop was taken down and some trees have been removed, and Mr. Wally is going to leave that part of his tract. I've, we've also had many continued talks with Kyle Scott, the new billing official. And basically, it's in regards to the two properties on College Highway, known as number 61 and 63. And they are, they are under orders from not only the state, but the town to comply with stormwater challenges, stormwater management challenges. And then likewise, number 159 Berkshire Avenue, where the gentleman has decimated a lot of the earth, he's also under orders, and he's actually in a cease and desist. The penalties have been building over the past year, because he has not, he has not done due process with the town. And in that particular instance, there was a brook that was relocated. So it's just to keep the board abreast of what is happening. Also, I've been trying, I've been, you know, busy trying to advise and supply information to the residents of Lexington Circle, the proposed Verizon cell tower project. And it seems that this is just, this is just, you know, letting the board know what's going on. There's been unauthorized letters for the residents that have been circulated. And the letters have many misconceptions and are factional, incorrect information on it, which has led to like a social media frenzy. And I was, I was making, making a recommendation, perhaps if, if allowed, Verizon may answer the questions in a professional manner to enlighten the residents, board members, and the media avenues before there are more misgivings. Certified letters were sent to the same abutters list in accordance with Chapter 40A, Section 2, which basically says the direct owners opposite abutters within 300 feet of the petitioner per state regulations have been notified. Also, in having further conversations with attorney, which we were notified approximately four years ago, certified mail was not required because of, because of the conflict at the last meeting. They were sent out just to clarify things. And what will be happening, the, the lawyer has told us we didn't have to. And what's going to happen, we're going to take out the word, word "certified" out of the bylaw for future, for future confusion.
Well, we're gonna, Alan, we're gonna have to talk about that. I mean, I'm not sure it should necessarily, but.
Okay.
It has to be kept in mind, but we could certainly talk about it at a, at a later meeting, but.
Okay. And basically, basically, you know, the, I know the public last time, the town, the planning board, we're fully transparent, and we do understand all the concerns. And it's not, it wasn't a very good feeling to be typically what's called turned, thrown under the bus, and then that's it.
Okay. All right. 7:10, Public Comments. Anybody have anything that is not on the agenda tonight that they want to bring to the Planning Board's attention? Okay. So before we start the continued public hearing for the Verizon cell tower, just again, mention if you could, anybody who hasn't yet, please try to go into the chat feature on Zoom and put in your name and address. So that'll be basically the sign-in sheet that you would other one sign if this was a meeting that was being conducted over at town. Let me see. If I could, I'm just gonna take a quick look to see if there's folks calling in who obviously would not have the ability to go into the chat. Let's see, I see a couple of phone, people calling in. One ends with 1-8-1-4. If you could, if you wouldn't mind unmuting and just let me know your name and address for the record, that'd be great.
Hello?
Yep.
Oh, hi, my number's the 1-8-1-4, and it's Jennifer and John Horky. We're 7 Lexington Circle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I see it ends with a 1-7-7-0. If you could just let me know your name and address, that'd be great.
Ah, yeah, I'm Christina Fraser. I'm at 18 Patriots Way.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, let's see here.
Hello?
Most of these are obvious, but let me just, there is one that just says iPhone. I just want to make sure, if that's you, just make sure you get into the chat. If not, we can't, we can't know your name, obviously. I don't see any other phone. If there's anybody else who is having difficulty putting information into the chat or is on the phone that I missed, if you could just speak up and let me know your name and address, so we have it for the record, that'd be great.
Dan Searls, 45 Lexington.
Thank you. Anyone else before we start?
Hello?
Yep?
Hello? 16 Giran, Vasiliya Nina Kucherchuk.
Anybody else?
Yes, hello, it's Ann and Joe O'Tilagana, 21 Patriots Way.
Thank you. Anybody else before we start up? Thank you. All right, so we will open the continued public hearing on the Verizon cell tower, So, as I'm sure many of you know, last meeting, we opened up the hearing, and because of an issue with certified mail to abutters and meeting that technical requirement, we continued it on to today without getting into the substance at all of the application. So, you know, I did, I believe, is my memory, go over some of the requirements and set out sort of the structure of how we're going to proceed. But we do want to do that again, because we are going to be getting into the substance and because there may be folks who are here that weren't here at the prior. So, the structure of how we're gonna do it is, I am going to, when I finish up speaking, allow Verizon to make their presentation. And after they complete their presentation, if you could try, you know, when they're making their presentation, unless there's, unless there's some.
Mike, I have a question.
If folks could just hold on and keep it, keep muted if you could while we, while we go through this, I'd appreciate it.
Well, Mike, this is important, that we do this before Verizon makes their presentation.
Who, I'm sorry, who's speaking?
This is 12 Patriots Way. The only thing I'd like to say is, I did not receive any notification of this mail other than from my neighbors.
Okay, so, two things. One is I'd have to go back and look to see whether you're actually an abutter.
I am an abutter.
Okay, so let me go back and look, and then we'd obviously have to go back and look and see what the certification.
Yeah, what I would like to do is, let's have the same conversation we had last week. Has everybody been notified by certified mail with signatures that you can, that you can demonstrate from the receipt of these mails that you know everyone that is supposed to be here is here?
Well, I mean, that's, I don't believe that, I have to go back and look. I mean, certified mail is not the same as having signatures from everybody who got it. But hold on one second, let me just pull up.
Michael, Michael, looking at the plans, number 12 Patriots Way is in excess of 300 feet from the.
That's what I assumed. So, let me just go over it for folks, and I, you know, you can go to the application, and you can, I believe in the application, though I could be wrong. I believe the, the certified abutters list is somewhere in there. But the, what the law is, is that anyone who is within 300 feet of the property is considered a legal abutter. And so, to the extent that you are a legal abutter, you will get direct notice of the hearing. In this case, it's by certified mail under this specific bylaw. So unless you are on that list and within, you know, 300 feet of the property, and that is generated from the assessor's office, you would not be getting a certified letter. So, you know, my understanding is that the certified letters went out to all of the legal abutters, which is what is required, and I see no reason to delay any further going forward. I believe that that has been complied with, and I think that, you know, we can move forward. So, just to go over again, the structure, I'll turn it over after this to Verizon.
One second on the certified letters.
Excuse me, excuse me, this is, we're not going to be interrupting if we could, okay? I, I.
Well, you're talking about the letters. Certified, they were certified with no return receipt, 3811 form.
Okay.
That's how you know they were received, and that's how you know that the 3811 is the legal document that will be held up in court. Every time city has notified me, it is a form in a car. All the letters are just left in, left in the.
I, I'm gonna ask people if you could please keep your, your audio on mute. And this is not, I appreciate that there may be issues, and I'm gonna try to explain it the best I can. If you will let me finish, you would hopefully get your answer. And if you don't get your answer, I will happily take a pause between turning it over to Verizon, after what I speak, what I say, and turning it over to Verizon to allow for questions about procedure, okay? So, to address what was just said, what the bylaw requires is certified mail. Certified mail return receipt requested is an entirely different process. That's not what the bylaw says. The bylaw says certified mail. I also, you know, I think it is worth noting, as I noted last time, I am pretty certain that, that certainly all the abutters, but most people around here have notice of this. I don't, I find it unlikely that there's anybody who didn't have notice of this who was required to get it, because they got both a regular mail and a certified mail if they were required to get it. So, I, I think that process has been complied with. Again, I also expect this was gonna take a few meetings to get through. And if there is an issue, if you find out from one of your neighbors that they didn't get a certified letter, they didn't get notice of it, you know, please reach out to the planning board and let them know, and we will try to remedy that by allowing them to listen to this, obviously, and, and say what they need to say at a, at a subsequent meeting. So let me, if I could, just go through what the process will be, so that people have a sort of roadmap of tonight and going forward. The first thing I will do is turn it over to Verizon to make their presentation sort of as they see fit. They have the application, they will speak about it, they will, I know they have a few people who've shown up, who are associated with Verizon, who are gonna provide some further information. I would ask, if you could, to please hold your questions until they finish. You know, there may be little things, if you, if you don't hear something, you want them to repeat something, you know, that's probably not a big deal. You can, you can say it then, because it would be tough to go back and figure that out. But if you could, the best you could, kind of make a note of what your questions may be, listen to what they have to say, and then we will deal with that after. Everybody will get a chance to ask whatever questions and make whatever comments they want. I promise you, whether it's, you know, tonight or a different night, I promise you, you will get that opportunity. So Verizon will make their presentation. It'll then be the chance for the board members to ask some questions of Verizon and offer any comments they want. We will then turn it over to town officials, and there's a number of them on the call tonight to ask questions or make comments. And then we will open it up to public comments and questions. And as I said, everybody will get that opportunity to ask those questions and make those comments. The one thing I will ask of Verizon, again, I, you know, I'm making a presumption, and I'm not guaranteeing it, and I'm not intentionally doing it, but I, it's, it seems to me from the number of people and what we're dealing with, that this is likely gonna be a multiple-meeting hearing. And so, I, I would just ask of Verizon, if, after they make their presentation, they see that there are individuals who may not be available, you know, at a subsequent meeting, to just let us know, so that we can try to focus any questions to those individuals, you know, in an efficient manner, rather than have them come back somewhere down the line. Okay, so I did want to just go over that, as well as give a quick little rundown of what the actual bylaw requirements and federal law is that will be applicable to this application, just so everybody has, at least in their minds, what the, what the requirements are, what we're gonna be thinking about, and what, to some degree, we can't be thinking about, to the extent that there's prohibitions in the law. So, this is available online, everybody can get it. If you just type into Google, "Southwigg zoning bylaws," it's Chapter 185. You can go to Section 23.1 of Chapter 185. It is called the Wireless Communications Services District Regulation. I'll read to you subsection A, which is, "The purpose of the district. It is to minimize adverse impacts of wireless communication facilities, satellite dishes, and antennas on adjacent properties, residential neighborhoods, and scenic vistas and view sheds, minimizing the overall number and height of such facilities to only what is essential, and to promote shared use of existing facilities and alternatives to reduce the need for new facilities." So that is the purpose of this bylaw. Verizon is required to obtain a special permit to put up a cell tower. They are required to comply with the special permit requirements. I'm not gonna read them all, there's about 17, they're actually not about, there is 17 listed conditions in special permits by law, which I always confuse these two, but I believe it's nine, 10, I think it's the site plan, so I think it's nine. There are 17 requirements to satisfy for a special permit. The, any new towers shall be considered only upon a finding by the planning board that existing towers, approved towers, and other, or other locations cannot accommodate the wireless communications equipment planned for the proposed tower. So that's one of our bylaws. They have to submit a number of things which are listed out in this bylaw, and that's been put onto the website. I hope everybody is able to go through and take a look. I'm just seeing in the chat, Doug Moglen, a select board member, has been kind enough to put on a link to, I believe, the, just from looking at the link, I believe that's the, the bylaw, 23.1.
Also, Michael, there is, there is an overlay wireless communications zone shown on a map.
Yep, and I will.
Which is highlighted in yellow.
Yep, and I will, I have a copy of that at some point later on. I will pull it up in the screen share, so that everybody can see. But again, you can also look at that, I don't know if it's on the website for the town. I typically go to the GIS, which is sort of the map, and you can put various different categories on there, and you can put a, you know, a layer of the wireless overlay district, and you can see exactly where those zones are in town. So let me just read a couple more things, and then we'll get on to the presentation. The bylaw requires that it be constructed at the minimum height necessary to accommodate the anticipated and future use. It will be set back a minimum, minimum of three and a half times the total height of the tower from any residential lot line or residential structure. It cannot exceed 150 feet in height, as measured from the ground level of the base of the tower. It'll be sighted in such a manner that the view of the facility from the adjacent abutters, residential neighbors, and other areas of town will be as limited as possible. Towers will be painted or otherwise colored, so they will blend in with the landscape or the structure on which they are located. They will be designed to accommodate the maximum number of users, technologically practical, so that the number of facilities in town will be reduced. And I think that, finally, when reviewing this, the planning board can grant it, deny it, or grant it with conditions. It'll be denied if the planning board finds that the applicant has failed to meet the requirements in the bylaw. When considering the application, the planning board shall consider whether and to what extent there is a negative impact from the proximity of the facility to residential dwellings and the impact of the facility on the residences. The planning board also shall consider whether and to what extent there is a negative impact of the proposed facility on scenic vistas and other natural features in the landscape. There are certainly other portions of that bylaw, I was trying to pick out some of the sort of bigger things and give you a bit of a summary, but I would direct everybody's attention to that, and they can take a look through that. The other aspect of this is the Telecommunications Act of 1996, which is a federal statute. And, you know, basically, that provides two, you know, sort of conditions that sort of trump anything that is in the bylaw for municipalities. First is, in making the decision, the planning board can't prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting the provision of cellphone services. So that is the first one. The other thing is, we are required to produce a decision that is in writing and that is supported by substantial evidence that's in that record. So, finally, it says that the planning board, in this case, may not regulate the cell tower on the basis of the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions, to the extent that such facilities comply with the commission's regulations concerning such emissions. So, please keep that in mind as we go forward, that that is a prohibition that we have based on the Telecommunications Act of 1996. Again, there's more to that section, and you can certainly go on Google and pull it up. It is 47 USC, Section 332. And you can take a look through that. So with that having been said, is there anything else procedurally that anybody wants to bring to my attention now before we turn it over to Verizon for the presentation?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Would you mind just stating for the record who the voting members of the planning board are for this hearing?
Sure. I believe we're all present, but I will, let me just, I have three screens here, so let me take a look and make sure. But I am the chair, the vice chair is Marcus Phelps, who I do see. Next is Dick Utzinger, who I also see. I used to see Dave Sutton on here, I'm sure he is, there he is, there's Dave. Then Dave Spina, who is also on here, I see him. And then we have also, just to remind everybody, designated, if necessary, as a, as a voting member, the alternate member, Jessica Thornton, who I did see on here, but let me make sure she is still here. Yes, she is. Okay, so those are the members of the planning board. You know, I will, again, because we didn't get into the substance, I think it's appropriate to repeat what I did last, what I said last time, which is that I am a resident of 16 Lexington Circle. It is sort of on the far side of the circle, away from where this is being sighted. I am not an abutter, I am not an abutter, too an abutter, I am not in what's considered an interested party in any way. I don't see that I have any financial interest in this or impacted by this as of right now. That's certainly something, because there is a proximity that I am keeping, you know, close watch on, and if there is something that comes up that's, you know, suggests that there is a financial interest that may affect my property. a financial that may affect my property, you know, I would certainly have to address that and figure out whether I would have to recuse myself. I'm happy to listen if anybody has any questions about that or anything to add to that. I am happy to listen to it right now and think about it, but you know, that's where I've gotten having talked to town council and the ethics commission and various other folks at this point in time. Anything else procedural before we move on to the presentation? So Attorney Fenton, I will turn it over to you and let you make the presentation. Just obviously if you need screen sharing or what have you, just let us know and we'll work our best to get that to happen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. My name is Michael Fenton. I'm an attorney and shareholder at Schatz Schwarz and Fenton, PC. Our office is at 1441 Main Street in Springfield, Suite 1100. We are counsel to Selco Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless. The applicant before you this evening for the requested special permit. I'd like to start by thanking you, Mr. Chair, and the other members of the board for conducting this hearing tonight. In the age of the coronavirus, it is a difficult thing to perform a public hearing of this sort via Zoom and we're grateful for your efforts in every go. So thank you very much. Now I'd like to introduce our team. We have Jay Latori with us. Jay is a radio frequency engineer with Verizon Wireless. His counterpart is Kip DeVito. Kip is also a radio frequency engineer with Verizon. We're also joined by my colleague Ellen Fryman, a partner at Schatz Schwarz and Fenton, and our associate Stephen Sobie, an attorney with our office. Dean Gustafson is with All Points Technology. Dean is our wetlands consultant. David Vivian is with Structure Consulting. He is our site acquisition professional in charge of leasing. And David's also on the Zoom. Last but not least, we are also joined by Sylvester Behemi. And Sylvester is an engineer with Hudson Design Group and responsible for the zoning drawings tonight. So what I intend to do, Mr. Chair, is just provide a brief overview of some of the history of this project and why we're here tonight. Then I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Latori, who will speak about the data and voice coverage needs in the town of Southwick and the reason for the selection of this site. And then we'll turn it over to Sylvester, who will talk to us and share his screen with the zoning drawings, the overall design of the tower itself and some photo simulations that were prepared. So first and foremost, this is a proposed lease with the town of Southwick for a 50 by 50 leased and fenced compound to support 120-foot wireless telecommunications tower in a heavily wooded and shielded town-owned parcel. The tower is 100, 420 feet from the nearest residential property line and therefore no variance for setback is required in this case. That's a very extensive requirement under your local bylaw, three and a half times the tower height, as you pointed out, Mr. Chair. And finding a site in town that would comply with that was a difficult thing to do. So we're here to request the special permit as we are proposing what's defined under the bylaw as a major communications facility. That is under chapter 185, section 23.1, subsection D1. Verizon's been looking for a site in this area of Southwick for many years. The site is in the overlay district and it is one of the few overlay districts in this area, one of the few overlay district parcels in this area of town, making it an optimal choice for Verizon to propose its installation. When Verizon selects a site, there are many things that are taken into consideration. There is the radio frequency, which you'll hear from our expert about shortly. There is addressing and making sure that we're complying with the use restrictions in town. That is finding an overlay district compatible site and ensuring that the overlay site that we've chosen will also be compatible with the setbacks, mainly the three and a half times the height of the tower from a residential lot line. Additionally, there's other considerations, including finding a willing landlord, wetlands considerations, historic impacts, visibility, et cetera. And so a lot of time and energy goes into Verizon selecting its sites. And we're very proud of the application that we put together and the selection of this site off of Liberty Lane, also known as off Foster Row. So in 2017, the town put out an RFP for this property for a wireless telecommunications tower. And on September 13th of 2017, Verizon responded to that RFP. A short time after, it was selected as the successful proposer and we negotiated and signed a lease with the town in late 2019 for this parcel. That lease involves rent paid to the town as well as free space on the tower for public safety equipment to enable the town's mainly fire and police department to deploy their communications equipment without added expense. We filed for this special permit, Mr. Chairman, back in April of 2020. And we've actually conducted to date two balloon floats at this site. One in January of 17 in preparation for our RFP submission and another on March 6th of this year to prepare the photo simulations which you see in your packet that accompany our submission, that accompany our submission. Our application includes evidence of compliance with each and every provision of the wireless telecommunications zoning bylaw in the town of Southwick. And we're here to engage with the board and the residents about any questions and answer any concerns that you may have about the proposal. So with that said, that's a that's an overview of how we arrived at where we are. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Jay Latori, one of Verizon Wireless's principal radio frequency experts to tell you a little bit about coverage in town and why this installation is so critical to expanding Verizon's coverage to its customers.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Fenton. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board for allowing Verizon the opportunity to speak to you all tonight about Verizon's proposal and the need for enhanced wireless services in this part of Southwick. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to share my screen right now. I apologize, Mr. Chairman. I'm getting a message that says host disabled participant screen sharing. I'm going to pause until that is granted.
Yeah, hold on one second. All right, hold on a second. Mr. Latori, let me.
No problem, sir. Thank you.
I think you have to make him the host, Mike.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to do here. Okay, try that now, Mr. Latori, and see if that works.
If that does look like that's going to work, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Okay, Mr. Chairman, would you mind just confirming that you can see my screen, sir?
I can, yeah.
Very good. And my audio is fine?
It is. Yep, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, thanks for the technical assistance. For the record, my name is Jay Latori. I am a radio frequency engineer with Verizon Wireless, assigned to this project. And I'm here tonight to speak to you about the needs for the facility on the town-owned parcel. For the purposes of my demonstration, we refer to our this facility within Verizon as Southwick Southeast, MA. Okay, here we go. I'll briefly speak about the purpose of this facility. What we are proposing, as Counselor Fenton mentioned, is a 120-foot monopole facility. The monopole will host three sectors of wireless technologies, which will include a series of antennas which will broadcast Verizon's licensed LTE service. It will host radios that are utilized to create the wireless signals that allow communication between the wireless facility and the user devices, whether those are tablets or phones or hotspots, things of that nature. There'll also be additional cables that run fiber and power from the radios down into Verizon's equipment pad at the bottom of the tower compound and other ancillary cables. I'm going to defer further discussion about the physical components of the facility to my colleague Sylvester, who will speak to the drawings before you in a little bit. I'll focus on the purpose of the site and its need and why this parcel meets Verizon's needs. The facility is approximately 1.75 miles from the next closest facility in the town. Verizon is co-located, meaning Verizon has antennas on existing structures on three other facilities in town. This would be Verizon's, should it be approved, fourth facility within the town of Southwick. The primary reason for this proposed facility is twofold. The first is coverage. Verizon is experiencing a coverage gap in this area of Southwick due to the fact that there are a, you know, a meaningful distance between the closest facility in this part of the community, combined with the fact that it is a more wooded area within this part of the community, which does create losses in wireless signal and the need for additional facilities to maintain a high quality of service. In addition to that, Verizon is experiencing and its customers are experiencing insufficient service, which stems from its facilities being located further away and having its existing radio resources strained as more customers use Verizon's network for things like not only phone calls or text messages, but also video chats, emails, FaceTime. And in the age of COVID-19, more and more, we've seen our facilities become a primary source for internet services, for working from home, learning from home and and other needs that might have traditionally, you know, been met outside of the home. And in addition to that, our facilities do provide wireless 911 services, which continues to be a critical public safety component of Verizon's network, particularly at a time as more Americans are turning down their traditional landline services and preferring to solely depend on their wireless services for connectivity. Mr. Chairman, I'll briefly talk about those those two points that I mentioned previously. I refer to them as a coverage gap and insufficient service. When we speak to coverage, we're referring to the signal strength needed in order to maintain a reliable connection to Verizon's network and obtain a reliable experience. And, you know, ultimately, that requires to have some semblance of wireless signal in order for the phone to not only make a call or send a text, but to also transfer data and information about the quality of the signal and where the phone is positioned to maintain, you know, the best connectivity on the network. So signal strength and quality is important. Another important component of wireless networks, which we'll talk about, is wireless capacity. Increasingly, we see with the advent of a fourth generation LTE networks, which that we are proposing on this tower to be delivered to Verizon's customers. We see that as the demands of wireless communications increase for many of the reasons I stated previously, that demand for service continues to grow and that can put a strain on the surrounding facilities, which will in essence create a service degradation and insufficient service for customers, even those that may live close to a wireless facility and typically would otherwise have good wireless coverage. So this facility, in addition to meeting and helping to resolve a significant coverage gap, is also going to provide wireless capacity enhancements and wireless capacity offload to adjacent facilities in and around town so that the not only the customers near and around the proposed facility will enjoy robust Verizon service, but also customers that may be further away from this facility, but nonetheless are dealing with insufficient service because of the strain on Verizon's network, will similarly reap benefits from the proposal. Again, very briefly, because I will show a more detailed map shortly, but wireless coverage maps are generated by radio frequency propagation tools. They are tuned engineering models that take into account such variables as antenna height off the ground and the location of facilities, the type of antennas used and their orientation and gain the frequencies deployed from those antennas and the power associated with the radio that generates wireless signals. They also take into account topography of the land and tree density and other ecological features to provide the most accurate engineering model of coverage as possible. Speaking again briefly about wireless capacity, we like to use this example of a freeway when talking about wireless capacity because it's an easy way to visualize the need for capacity in a network as well as coverage and the need for densification of networks. That is the building of new wireless facilities to keep up with the demand that is being imposed on existing facilities. In the example you have here, you can think of a highway. Let's call it a one-lane highway and maybe at 9:00 PM or 11:00 PM, you drive down the highway and you can go 65 miles an hour. There isn't much traffic on the road. There aren't many obstacles to get from point A to point B. And someone moves through that highway pretty quickly. You then envision that same experience at seven in the morning when you're trying to get to work or bring your children to school and there are many people all trying to access that one-lane highway and you deal with congestion and traffic backups and inevitably slowdowns in your efforts to get from point A to point B. And a wireless network functions much the same way. So we think about the strategic deployment of additional facilities as a way of growing wireless capacity by in essence, growing the lanes of the highway so that additional customers can join the network and maintain the same level of service as they come to expect from our services. Again, Mr. Chairman, I'll just comment. Included in your packet is a couple of interesting, you know, pieces of information about wireless data growth. We continue to see year-over-year growth in demand for our services in both voice, text and data. I mentioned again, Mr. Chairman, the benefits of emergency communications, the assurances of knowing that customers will be able to make a 911 call whether they're outside, whether they're in their car or in their homes is an important consideration when evaluating the benefits of wireless communications facilities. Mr. Chairman, you spoke to this already. Mr. Chairman, you spoke to this already, but I would just like to state for the record that as part of Verizon's application, Verizon was required to show evidence that the proposed facility meets the requirements created by the FCC as it relates to radio frequency emissions and safety of our facilities. The FCC is the federal entity that is responsible for setting the standards, and Verizon has an obligation to comply with them. And our application does show that using the FCC's processes and calculations for evaluating radio frequency emissions, that the facility is well within the required limits and meets all of those requirements. Now, I'd like to turn your attention to the coverage maps. What you see here is a coverage map of Verizon's 700 megahertz layer. It's one of several layers of spectrum that Verizon would propose to deploy at the facility, but it is the lowest frequency that we deploy. And in wireless networks, as your frequency decreases in megahertz, its ability to traverse long distances generally increases. So this is a good example to kind of give a better understanding of the proposed footprint of the facility. Just to orient you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, as well as the public, you have Route 57 here, meeting the Route 10 interchange here. You're gonna see four sets of pie shapes that have a color attached to them with different names of facilities, and this is a Congamont Pond. All of these that have their shapes or sectors filled in are existing facilities. As I mentioned, Verizon has radio frequency services coming from three existing facilities in the town of Southwick. There's also coverage that extends into the town of Southwick from Verizon's facility on top of Proven Mountain at the Agawam-Westfield border, coming down into Southwick. And then you see here the proposed site location, which we refer to as Southwick Southeast. There's three different levels of coverage that are displayed in this map. The levels in green are the best wireless signal strength, and accordingly, these signals are the closest to the existing facilities. And the areas of green, based on Verizon's computer modeling, these are the areas where we would expect our customers to have a reliable indoor experience. The next coverage level that you see here are areas in yellow, and these are areas in which Verizon would not typically estimate the reliability of service indoors to be sufficient, but would expect that customers would be able to make a call in their car. Then you do see in some areas in and around the proposed facility in gray. And let me just mention, here's the Connecticut-Massachusetts border, and coming down further here is the notch. You'll see in some areas of gray Verizon's lowest-level coverage shown on this map. And these would be areas where Verizon's coverage, we would anticipate to have reliable outdoor service, but not necessarily reliable in-car service or in-home service. So we do have a fairly sufficient, excuse me, a fairly significant coverage gap in and around the proposed facility and the surrounding roads. I'm gonna tap to the next map, and the map is gonna be the same. It's just going to show how the coverage will change with the proposed facility. So you'll see, I'm gonna tap down here, and you'll see when I do so, a fairly substantial increase in the amount of coverage in and around the area where wireless service is now reliable. And you'll see there in the areas of green, there's also areas within here where coverage that was once in that more marginal, outdoor-only experience has now been improved to at least a reliable in-car experience. And I find it is helpful to tap back and forth on these just to get a feel for the, you know, enhancement that is proposed by the facility. So I'm just gonna step back once more, hold it for a second. Again, refer everyone on the call to this area, and then step forward again so that you can see the proposed enhancements that the facility will bring to the area, should it be approved. This next map is basically the same concept, a little more color here. This is called a serving sector map. And the purpose of this map is to give you an idea of, within a given area, if we assume equal variables related to coverage and the location of facilities, when, what you will generally experience in terms of what facility you will be attached to in a geographical area. And what you see on the left-hand map is, again, the same concept. That facility that we are proposing, Southwick Southeast, turned off. And coverage is bleeding in into this area primarily from two locations. One is from our facility known as Southwick II. That's this kind of orange color bleeding in into parts of area. The other is coming in from Verizon's facility, not in the town of Southwick, but on top of them, Proven Mountain Range at the Agawam-Westfield border, and that's kind of that purple-magenta color coming in here. And then what you see here on the right-hand side is the same map, but with Verizon's proposed Southeast facility, you know, activated. And what you'll see here is, some of the benefits of this is that you now have more localized coverage and capacity in this area. The ability for users to make a wireless call or data session closer to the facility will improve their, you know, experience on Verizon's network pretty dramatically. I just want to mention, Mr. Chairman, and I apologize to the public for this. It's a little confusing on this map, I realize, because this sector in purple looks really close to this sector in purple. And, you know, based on, you know, the outcome of tonight's meeting, and, you know, Verizon would be happy to provide an updated set of maps to just make this look a little more clear. But again, the point I'm making is that with this proposed facility, there'll be much more localized services for Verizon customers. And at the same time, what you'll see is that the strain being placed on some of these other facilities that are trying to cover and provide capacity to a lot of customers is going to be greatly improved. And you see that in that their overall footprints, where they're gonna be the dominant sector, are shrunk in size. As part of Verizon's testimony, we've provided information related to our experience in terms of throughput and service in and around the Southwick area, particularly the facilities that are most likely to see a capacity benefit from the proposed facility. We've got three different facilities listed here. Two of them are in the town of Southwick. Those are the green and blue lines. And the red one that you see here is the Proven Mountain facility that is serving quite a bit of the area where we have a proposed facility. And what you're basically looking at on the left-hand side is the average megabits per second experience of the facilities in and around this part of Southwick. And on this axis, you're seeing a period of days, a one-week period. And generally, what we find, which is very consistent with most wireless networks and locations, is that as you move from the middle of the night and into the daytime and into the working part of the day, from say, you know, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, when everyone's up, when everyone's using their phone for work, for school, for fun, you see a trough in the performance of the network. The performance that seems to look fine in the wee hours of the night comes down really significantly as you get to 12 o'clock, 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock, and really doesn't start to come back up until late in the day, closer to midnight. And this is what we see in wireless networks every day. We see it in large cities, in suburban towns, and in rural communities, that there is a demand for services, there is a need for them, and with that comes the need to provide enhanced facilities to either, to provide capacity relief to our facilities, to eliminate coverage gaps, and to continue to maintain the quality of service that our customers and the public depend on. Again, Mr. Chairman, I thank you for the opportunity, members of the board and the public, to talk a little bit about Verizon's proposed facility and the benefits to its network. What I'll do now, Mr. Chairman, is hand it off to my colleague Sylvester, who's gonna speak a little bit more about the construction and the physical makeup of the facility. But I'll certainly be on the call and be able to answer questions that the board or members of the public may have. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman and Sylvester, I did stop screen sharing, so you should be able to take control of that.
Okay, the floor is yours, Sylvester.
All right, I'm gonna share the screen, Sylvester, with Hudson Design Group Consultant for this project. Okay, can you confirm, Mr. Chairman, if I have the screen shared?
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, just your folder, but yes, I can see it and hear you. It hasn't popped up yet, the actual PDF.
Okay. I'll try it again.
How about now?
I'm still seeing, and certainly if anybody else is seeing it, let me know. Maybe it's just me, but I'm just seeing a folder without the PDF.
Yeah, I see the PDF on the right.
Yep.
Sylvester, if I may, I think it may run into this before. If you open the PDF in advance of sharing your screen, then you may have better success. So you might wanna exit sharing your screen with the PDF open and then re-enter.
Are we good? Am I sharing the screen?
No, no, we can't share screen.
Okay. What I'm gonna do, I have a hot coffee, if that makes sense. And I'll just see if I can present by showing my hot coffees over here.
Sylvester, before you do that, Mr. Chairman, there's a couple of other people on the Zoom who have access to those drawings, so...
That's what I'm gonna say, is it's just from your application, isn't it?
Stephen Sobie, if you can share your screen with the zoning drawings, and Sylvester, you can just narrate.
Okay.
There we go.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, so this first page is basically a general zoning drawing page showing our site. It's a densely wooded area on 13 Liberty Lane. You can go to the next page. This is basically the plans, the general parcel for this project. In the center, at 238 feet away from the property line, we are showing our proposed tower. This tower is going to be located in our main parcel, on parcel 9231, with an access at 9232. If you could also go to the next page. This page is the site plan showing our access easement. We're going to have a 100 by 100-foot lease area for the improvements and a 50 by 50-foot chain-link fence compound. The compound will consist of crushed stone in that 50 by 50-foot chain-link fence area. A 20-foot-wide easement with a 12-foot-wide gravel road will lead from Liberty Lane to the compound, and it will be groveled. If you can go to the next page. Okay. So basically, this page here shows where our site is. It is set back at 420 feet away from the property line to meet the required zoning setbacks with a tower that is 120-foot tall. Can you go to the next page? So this is the proposed gravel road. It will obviously begin at Liberty Lane. And right at the beginning of the road, we will have, we'll propose an anti-tracking pad. This is just so that during construction, there's no, you know, gravel tracking into the streets. This will be removed upon completion of construction. There will be some minimum tree clearance, only just for the 12-foot-wide gravel road leading to the site. There'll be minimal site clearance on the compound. It's keeping the area almost to its natural state. So definitely, clearing will be kept to a minimal. We will also, there's some objects on the streets. If you look at the detail, number 3C4, where we're showing some, you know, inlet protection so that erosion control doesn't damage the existing stormwater systems on the road. They will be, we've had to make revisions on this plans. So a note stating that a permit will be required for trenching... for this project, and this will begin, this will be, uh, obtained prior to construction, or permit for trenching and a new driveway. Okay, can go to the next page. And this page here basically shows the locus, um, of the properties that are, and are five hundred feet away from the tower. Um, this will be one part of the, of the pages. Go to the next page. Uh, and the northern, uh, north, um, east side of the, of the locus where, uh, properties are being shown, which are five hundred feet away from the tower. Next page. This is a detail for the compound, uh, fifty foot, fifty by fifty foot compound, uh, minimal clearance. Uh, the, the site is fairly flat, so there won't be that much of cotton fills involved. With the, the Verizon equipment is gonna consist of a propane, uh, tank on a four by ten foot concrete pad. Uh, another concrete pad with Verizon radio equipment, uh, cabinets are going to be installed on, and that pad is going to be four foot by, uh, seven foot point five foot, uh, in size. The cabinet itself, there'll be one cabinet on the, on the concrete pad, uh, roughly the size about three feet by two feet, and would stand a roughly six foot tall. Also, we, these cabinets are going, in the front of the cabinet, are going to be shielded for ice to protect, um, you know, field techs, uh, visiting the sites. Also, in the part of the installation, you will have, is going to be a, a natural gas, um, generator to, for backup power. Uh, there is an H-frame just next to the generator, and that H-frame is going to house, uh, a junction, a connection for the fiber, and also the power that supplies, um, the site. Uh, on the northern east side of the compound is, will, Verizon will propose, uh, a transformer uh, to step down the power that's coming in, the secondary power coming in from the street, uh, and an H-frame for a multi-tenant, um, install, including Verizon. Uh, three other carriers will be added to the, with the site if they so, if, if they so wish to, but they definitely, the site can definitely accommodate, uh, three other carriers. Um, you can then go to the next page. Uh, this is the, the tower itself, it stands a hundred and twenty foot tall. It'll be designed to take, to accommodate three additional carriers, uh, in the future if they so wish to, uh, co-locate on this, on the site. Uh, this, the site will be designed to the, the current standards, uh, for, for the structural foundation and, and tower support. Verizon will be installing, um, its ra- its antennas at the top, uh, at the top of the tower, at a hundred and twenty foot tall from the ground. Uh, radios will be also installed in the same level in, in other apartments, uh, that, and that is necessary for this tower to function. Uh, in the lower end, uh, the highest points, uh, will be a ten foot, uh, ice canopy to protect field techs, uh, as they enter the sites. An antenna plane, uh, depicting the same information, antennas, a platform which the antennas will be attached to and will be also mounted onto the monopole. If you go to the next page. Uh, these are just general details. The, uh, the, uh, chain link fence that will enclose the site will be at eight feet tall. An ice bridge to con- to convey, uh, fiber cables from the equipment cabinets, uh, to the monopole. Uh, typical trenching detail, uh, showing utilities, uh, which will begin at, uh, Liberty Lane to the site. And, uh, general, that's the general, uh, trenching detail. Uh, the next detail, uh, detail number five is basically a barrier gate that will be at, at about twenty-four feet away from the, uh, Liberty Lane. Safety bullet, uh, just in case, uh, just for safety in case, uh, trucks or other vehicles are too close to the site and protect utilities on site. Can go to the next page. These are general, uh, erosion control details and surface cover. The first detail shows, uh, crush stone gravel. This is basically the makeup of the compound, the fifty by fifty area. The next detail is driveway typical detail, uh, showing the twelve foot wide, uh, road. Uh, the temporal, uh, tracking pad, right at the entrance of Liberty, uh, Lane, will be installed, and this spans fifty feet awa- away from the edge of gravel, existing edge of gravel, and then fifty feet, fifty feet towards the compound. A sil-soc detail for erosion control purposes. Um, as, as I mentioned earlier on, we will be protecting those storm water systems that are near the, the site, uh, on Liberty Lane. Um, you'll see some inlet of, of protection, uh, detail, that'll be detail number five. We go to the next page. These are just our general notes, um, the, you know, that govern this whole entire project for environmental. And that, uh, is the end of our, the zoning drawing presentation.
Sylvester, before you move on to the photo simulations, would you mind, um, going back to the third page and addressing the width of the access easement, along with the width of the gravel road?
Yeah, from, on this page here, we are shown a twenty foot wide access and utility easement. Uh, that is basically, the, these, an easement obviously is, is an imaginary line. This is the space in which we are, we are looking for access into the site. And then if you see our next page, you will see our gravel road, which is basically, uh, twelve foot wide gravel road, that's going to be within the, the twenty foot wide, uh, utility easement, access and utility easement.
Thank you, that was just a question in the chat.
Okay. Thank you. And if you could, uh, share the, the photos since. So, so then this site here, uh, photos were taken along, uh, about at a radius of a mile from the facility to be proposed. If you can go to the next page. Uh, the, the numbers in yellow indicate, uh, points of, of, um, where photograph was taken. Um, and had slight, they had slight, a slight visibility, and the numbers in red are photographs and with the number, uh, indicating, um, points in which there was no visibility at all. So, basically, we're gonna go through this whole entire, uh, pages of this PDF, and the only pictures you will notice will, with some visibility are going to be photograph number one, photograph number seven, photograph number twelve, and photograph number twelve, number eleven. And you can go on to the next page, and so this is photograph number one. If you see, there's, there's a balloon float there, just next to the house, little bit in red. And if you go to, uh, photograph, uh, you go to the next page. Okay, for, next page shows, uh, is, is photograph number one with the proposed, um, simulation of this, of the tower. We go to the next page, no visibility on this, on this page, this is our twenty degree run. There is no visibility on this page, northeast of the site, on page three at nineteen. No visibility on this page. Nope, with the balloon float. Photograph number five, same, there's no visibility, next page. Photograph number six, no visibility. And photograph number seven, slight visibility, that, this picture shows the balloon, and the next picture it shows the simulation in the place where the balloon was once the site's built. Uh, next page, no visibility on this page, thirteen Liberty Lane. And no visibility on, on photograph number nine. There's visibility on photograph number ten, there's a balloon there. And if you go to the next pa- that's where the tower is going to be on that viewpoint. Next photograph, photograph number eleven, uh, picture taken from, uh, 12 Pine, no. Uh, southwest from the site, and there's a little bit of visibility, balloon at a distance. And that's the simulation, uh, once the tower was constructed. Uh, no, this, on, on this page here, a photograph number twelve, we cannot see that's the balloon. Go to the next page. And that confirms the same thing, next. No visibility on this page, fifty forest the road. Uh, no, photograph fourteen, there's no visibility on photograph fourteen. Photograph fifteen does not show any vis- visibility. And same story, no visibility from photograph, uh, sixteen. Seventeen, no visibility on photograph seventeen, same, no visibility on photograph eighteen. These are, these are shots taken around the site. No visibility on photograph nineteen. No visibility on, on twenty. Twenty-one, there's no visibility on twenty-one, watch the road. Uh, photograph twenty-two taken from, uh, 151 Long Yard Road, no visibility. No visibility on, from photograph twenty, twenty-three. No visibility on photograph twenty-four. No, no visibility on photograph twenty-five, this page. No visibility on twenty gra- photograph twenty-six. Same story here, and there's no visibility. And, uh, I think that ends it. Okay, that's about all.
Okay, thank you, Sylvester. Um, Mr. Chair, there were some comments and questions that came in through the chat during Sylvester's presentation, so, um, I don't know if the board would prefer to sit through them and direct them to us, or if you would like us to review the questions in the chat and respond to them. Uh, I would defer to you, Mr. Chair, in terms of how you'd like to proceed with that. But that concludes our presentation, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you, um, so what I, uh, oh, hold on a second, I just flipped the chat. Okay, so, um, what my plan is, is to kind of, just so that everybody can hear them, because there are certain people on the phone, uh, who may not be seeing, or may otherwise not be seeing the chat. So I will run through the questions, um, and if you guys could, uh, whichever person is appropriate, address them, that would be great. I think some of them have been addressed, but, uh, out of an abundance of caution, I'll just let you confirm them, um, rather than assume that they've been addressed. So, uh, there was a question about, um, what companies would have access, um, to this tower, besides Verizon? If any.
I, I, I can answer that, Mr. Chair. So there's an opportunity for colocation of other carriers, and if there are interested parties, Verizon will enter into lease agreements with them. And we've agreed to provide rent-free space to, uh, the town for its equipment. Any colocator, under the terms of the lease, the town will, uh, receive a portion of those, uh, rental proceeds from that sub-tenant.
And I believe you said there's room for three additional, um, tenants? Did I hear that correctly?
Yeah, can you confirm that, Sylvester, is it?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
Thank you, um. All right, let me just keep going through here, um. So the, but I believe you did clarify, and I'm assuming, um, like, that you saw it in the comments when you asked about it, but the, uh, twenty foot wide, um, area with the twelve feet of gravel going in, uh, for the access road. Um, but the question following that is, are they, are you clearing twenty feet worth of trees along that entire path?
Sylvester?
Uh, yes, uh, the, the idea is to clear about, uh, a little bit of, of clearance within twenty feet, yes. And, and, and obviously, we won't clear anything that's unnecessary. But, yes.
But the intention generally is to have a twenty foot wide path going through that, uh, those trees?
No, the intention is to have, uh, ten foot wide, and depending on the, on the terrain and how much we have to clear off, we, we won't necessarily open twenty feet of clearance if it's not needed.
Okay, fair enough.
So twelve feet is, is what is going to be designed, um, graded out, and then if there's need to, to expand it, it would not exceed twenty feet.
Is there a, uh, intention to have a certain buffer? Um, you know, sort of regardless of need, is, are you intending to have a foot or two feet of buffer? You know, as you go along there, no matter what?
Uh, there, there's definitely, I mean, the, the maximum is twenty feet.
No, but my question is, you know, you have the twelve feet of gravel. Are you planning on going outside of that by, you know, say, a foot? Uh, no matter what, just to make sure that there is some kind of buffer there outside of that, that road?
No, the road will be twelve feet wide. There's, there's no.
I'm talking about clearance, I'm talking about for clearance of the trees. Are you planning on clearing a section outside of that twelve feet, just generally, to get some kind of buffer, no matter what?
Yes, there'll, there'll be a clearance of about, and I, I would have to look at, uh, our tree, uh, our, our, our terrain again. I, I would say, I mean, because we haven't been, I wouldn't wanna impose it on ourselves right now, but I would say we wouldn't go beyond five feet of a buffer. You know.
Well, you, I mean, you don't, you can't, right? I mean, you, if you only have twenty feet, uh, and you're putting a twelve foot gravel road in there, you only have four feet on either side, pretty much.
Right, yeah, yeah. I just wanna say, let's, let's, let's put the maximum, the tw- the twenty feet clearance. Uh, the road in itself is, is really going to be on conditions.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, all right, let me go back here. The design of the top of the tower is, um, is what, please? How is that designed up there?
A hundred and twenty feet.
No, as far as what is at the top, I mean, and I guess.
Stephen, could you follow the zoning drawing, Stephen?
Yeah, and I don't wanna put words in the person's mouth, and they can certainly ask it later when we get to public comments, but at least in my head, um, getting a better sense of the dimensions of what's up top would be helpful, I think.
Right there. This, yeah, that's what it was.
Okay. And so, um, I'm not quickly seeing it, but are there dimensions that you have of that uh, device on the top there?
Yes, it says top of proposed monopole. And, and what you see there going above is the antenna that could, at, at this point, is four feet above the tower itself, but the tower is going to be twenty, a hundred and twenty foot tall.
But I'm talking about, um, sort of diameter, I don't, I can't tell whether it's a square, or a rectangle, or a circle, or whatever shape it is, but it's circle, so what, what's the diameter of that? Um, of that device up there?
The dia- the diameter is going to, we're gonna design this, this tower based on the conditions of, of the grade and whatever the geotech, we haven't performed the geotech yet. And once the tower is designed, that diameter, it's usually six foot at the bottom and about three feet at the top.
And about three feet at the top, but that's just a typical hundred and twenty foot tower. When we design, uh, when we design a foundation, we'll know for certain what that width, uh, bottom width and the top width. And of course, it's going to be based on the conditions of the, at the, at the site.
So, uh, let me just make sure I have it clear, um. That antenna that's up top. That's sort of shaded in this picture that we're looking at right now, and then there's, I, tell me if I'm wrong, but I think a view from the top down the bottom there. That is three feet wide?
No, that, that, yes, that's, that, that would be three feet wide, uh, in a, in a perfect world.
Correct, no, I under, I understand that there may be.
Yes.
There may be some, you know, um, site modifications that are necessary, but, you know, a standard. Antenna like that on this size tower, you're, you're estimating would be approximately three feet in diameter.
That's correct.
Sylvester, may I please jump in for one second? Um, I, I believe I understand the chairman's question. Um, Counselor Sobe, would you mind zooming in on the, uh, top of the tower again, please? Thank you, so, so Mister Chairman, I believe I understand your question, so. So the height of the typical panel antennas, so, so they're rectangular in, in shape. Uh, they're approximately, uh, eight feet tall. Um, and they're approximately, each individual antenna is approximately, um, you know, twelve to sixteen inches in width. Um, they're typically mounted, as you can see here, uh, in pairs. Um, as to, um, get the, the best radio frequency performance such that. Um, you know, each section of antennas, which I believe is what Sylvester was speaking to. Is approximately, you know, three and to three and a half feet in, in total width. Um, on the top of the tower, Sylvester was speaking to the circumference of the top of the towers, three feet. A platform will be installed, uh, on top of the tower. Um, the, the face of the platform, um, again, as Sylvester mentioned, um, you know, will be designed. Um, by Hudson Design Group, typically the, the face is, is approximately, you know, twelve to fifteen feet in, in width. And as I mentioned in my presentation, Mister Chairman, um, it's, it's built like a triangle, which is like, is, which is what you saw in the bottom right section of these plans. And, and the purpose for that is to, um, allow for the installation of additional appurtenances. In addition to the antennas, um, there is, um, the radios, as I mentioned, that generate the, the frequency. Um, that Verizon will deploy, there is, um, surge suppression boxes, uh, where we terminate power and fiber. Uh, and goes to the tower, there is, um, you know, grounding metal, uh, necessary to ground all the equipment. And so be, because of that, in addition to the antennas, there's, there's extra space made on the platform. To make sure that all the other appurtenances that make the, um, facility operational, um, have room to be installed. And in addition, um, that, um, should the facility be approved? Um, and, and get built that in future years, um, should there be the need for, you know, upgrades of the facility? Um, that we have the necessary space, um, to continue to deploy all of Verizon's proposed equipment on that same platform.
So if we're looking at this right now and we're going from. The left-hand side to the right-hand side, from where any kind of, um. Substance begins of this structure, what are we talking about for a distance? If that makes.
Sylvester, would you take that one, please?
Sure.
From, from, I guess, one mounting post to the other approximately?
Yeah, and I apologize because I'm not, I, I'm trying to look quickly and see terminology, so I, I, I'm. Trying to be general because frankly, I don't know all the terminology, um, but. If those are, if those. What look like, you know, sort of posts or pipes or whatever you want to call them there. If those are mounting posts, I'd say from the left-hand side, um, end, so I would go up a little bit right there. All the way to the right-hand side of that same thing, what are we talking about for a distance, just so. You know, if someone's looking at this, what are they seeing for a distance?
So you see the face, that face from one side to the extreme side, that's twelve feet wide approximately. And they are spaced at four feet apart. Those, those pipes that are vertical that you, you mentioned in the beginning.
Yeah.
Spaced at four feet apart.
Okay, from top to bottom, you mean?
No, uh, hori, horizontally, going from left to right. So twelve, uh, four feet apart and the total distance is a.
Oh, I see, okay, you're including the ones that run behind the antennas there, too?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry, I was, I was forgetting those, um. Okay, so. Okay, all right, and that is basically a square around, you basically repeat this face on, on four sides?
In this instance, it's three sides.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Rectangle, yes.
Yep, thank you, all right, so you repeat that on three sides, okay?
Yes.
All right, so let me just keep going with some of these so that we can get into. Um, some board questions, um. Let's see. If you, um. Do you have the photos up, someone just wants to see twelve Pine Knoll again, as I'm going through this, if you could just pull up twelve Pine Knoll. I don't know what number it is, um, but if you. Can see if you can quickly pull that up, that would be great.
Yeah, you had it.
There you go, um. Yeah, it, just to, so that we can expedite, I, I don't want to go into extensive public comments, but I know. Um, I, I see a comment from Amber Bach and Christian Bach about twelve Pine Knoll, is, you, you're welcome to unmute yourself and. Is that, you seem to think that that was not a accurate photograph of twelve Pine Knoll?
I'm looking at it right now, I'm just trying to visualize where that is.
Okay.
From our, from our.
That's. I just figured while we had it up, we might as well, you know, address this issue, so we're not pulling it back up again.
I appreciate it. I actually took a screenshot, so if, you know, just for further reference, because it's going forward, I don't want to hold it up on, on just this one slide. But thank you, I appreciate it.
And it's certainly in the application, too, so if you needed to pull it up on that, you can, you can grab that, um.
Okay, thank you.
So, one thing I think, um. Someone wanted to see three Liberty Lane, again, if you wouldn't mind just. Going through that, um, again, so we can address these in somewhat efficiently. And the person who wanted to.
There, um, they just passed it.
Oh, they just passed it?
Yeah.
Three or thirteen?
It's three, that's it there, geez.
Uh. They have that as nineteen.
Just, yes, that's nineteen Patriots Way, if they could just keep going, the next one was just right in there a little bit. There.
Okay, that's six, six Liberty Lane?
No, it's three Liberty Lane, that's where I live, and from what I can tell, this thing's going to be right behind me.
So your house is to the left of this photo?
This is my house here in the center of the photo, the brick front.
Okay, all right, so.
And also, I would ask, because the land, uh, it's a hill, it slopes, it goes right up. So if they're putting that tower there, that's going to be higher up even.
Okay, all right, um. The, one thing I think you folks, um, from Verizon should address, and I've, I think I've addressed it to a couple of folks. Uh, but certainly it needs, I think, to be addressed from you is. On the plan, which I believe you just took from, um, the plans that are on file. Uh, there is a, uh. What are listed as sort of future roads, again, the terminology they use, but I think they, they use the word future road. And there are in fact two of them, one of which. There's access for on Liberty Lane, which is what is being used for this, and then there's another one that comes between, I believe, thirty one and thirty three Lexington. Um, uh, could you, if you, someone from Verizon just address that issue? Because I think people are concerned about, uh, the thirty one, thirty three Lexington and, and the access road there.
I, I'd be happy to do that, Mister Chair, um, Steven, could you pull up the zoning, uh, page two? And also just for reference, some of the, uh, neighbors were just, uh, discussing. The, uh, indication of property addresses on the photo simulations. None, none of those photos are taken from private property, they're taken from the right of way. So the addresses are an approximation, um, of the location. So, uh, but Mister Chair, to your, uh, question, Steven, if you can go, not this sheet, sheet C one. Right there, okay, and then in the upper left-hand corner off of Lexington Circle, there's been a lot of questions about this. Uh, Verizon intends no access or development on that space that's indicated reserved for future street. That is from a previous subdivision plan approved by the planning board in town. And Verizon has, uh, no lease rights to that space. And we don't intend any clearing or utilization of that space, all of our access will come off of, uh, Liberty Lane.
Okay. All right, um, so I, let me just, uh, address, I saw Chief Bishop had a question and then we'll turn it over to the board members. And, uh, again, everybody will have an opportunity to ask their questions and comments and put out their comments. As we go forward, um, but I know Chief asked about where the public safety antenna would be placed. Um, on that diagram that was shown.
Sylvester, I don't think it is, is it shown on the drawing, it doesn't look like it is?
Uh, we, we were not told where they were going to collocate at the time. So the spaces is there, but they would have to let us know what, what elevation they, they need.
So does that mean that they'd be, they are going to be one of those three?
That is correct.
Okay, so realistically. Because that would be a condition that I think the, the police at least would want, um, for public safety. You would be providing an antenna that basically has two future. Um, or a tower that has two future spaces for, for other providers.
David, Vivian, if you're on the call, would you like to speak to that in terms of past experience with, uh, public safety equipment? Uh, going on these antennas, what are located generally?
Yes, actually, it depends on, uh, what public safety wants, but more often than not, it's a, uh, a whip antenna. And so, uh, likely what would happen would be there would be a whip antenna extending above, uh, the top of the tower.
So it would not take up one of those spaces for future providers?
That's been our experience.
Okay.
If, if the, uh, if the town would like to provide a, a list of its intended equipment. And desired location on the tower, we'd be happy to work with them on that and provide revised zoning drawings that show that, Mister Chair.
Okay, uh, well, well, let's get into some of the board questions, because it's already getting close to nine here, um, and. Um, and then we'll turn to public officials and obviously if, if, um, I've seen a few, uh, officers on here, if any of them. I wanted to address that, we certainly can get deeper into that, um, when we get to that section. Um, so I guess let me open it up to. The board, um, and anybody on the board have any questions or comments that they wish to raise at this point in time?
Marcus Phelps, uh, Michael, did we get any comments from other boards and commissions in writing? Such as Police and Fire Conservation Commission at all?
Um, from other boards. The only thing that I recall, and I believe I sent these around, um, uh, and they will be made available to anybody who wishes. To look at them, um, there was. Hold on, let me pull it up, uh, it was really just. Comments, um. About if a special permit is granted, what language, uh, they wanted in there as far as conditions. And so I, you know, let me actually read, I, I, let me actually read it and it's, it's reasonably short, so, you know, we can let the Verizon folks address it if they wish to. So this is under, sorry, I'm just trying to. Pull up the bylaw section that they're referring to, um. Okay, so, um, they're asking that Verizon provided no charge the top five feet of the tower. Um, three hundred sixty degree space installation and appropriate wiring for municipal public safety communication equipment. Uh, the town will be authorized to place one or more whip style antennas and related accessory ground equipment for municipal public safety. Uh, E.G. police, fire, or other public safety equipment. At the facility and on the tower, provided the town does not interfere with the, uh, provision of wireless communications and the location and size of the antennas. And the equipment is approved by Verizon Wireless. Uh, Verizon shall not charge any fee, including engineering load study requirements or rent for the. Placement of the town's equipment or additional fees at the facility around the tower. Uh, town will be responsible for the purchase, purchase and installation of the town's radio equipment and shall pay for the, any utilities attributable to it. Be able to tie into the site's utilities for related power and backup power. Uh, for example, generated power at, backup at the site, uh, and then Verizon to provide a knox box or combination for the gate to equipment compound. Um, so, you know, certainly, um, if there's anyone from Verizon who. Need, feels the need to address any of that, that, that is, at least as of right now, that written comments that we've received from. Police, fire, and DPW, um. As far as potential conditions on a special permit, um. Uh, I, it doesn't obviously mean that they won't raise anything or discuss anything, um, at the hearing here, but, uh, that's what they've written in. Uh, any sort of comments or questions about those, um, from folks at Verizon?
Michael, can I just, can I say something, Michael?
Yes.
There is no, there is no, uh, impact on the conservation area, there were no wetlands found.
Okay.
So that's why there was no comment for conservation, conservation was aware of it. Uh, but there, but the Verizon's environmental engineers and survey showed nothing, no impact at all.
Okay.
The only other thing that you did receive, it was a comment from Randy Brown, the Director of Public Works. He was concerned about the anti-tracking pad, you know, at Liberty Lane. He was also, you know, was a question at one time. Location of the fence, you know, the, wherever the fence is going to be. And, uh, just for the neighbors, they're going to still have that, they can't go up the driveway, you know, because of the, because of the, the gate. They'll be able to still use it as passive recreation, you know, they, like, it's going to be a fifty foot by fifty foot area. Um, there, there's animals that go through there, people are walking. People are utilizing it, they'll still be able to utilize that, there'll be no tie, there'll be no ties coming down, blocking, restricting, or creating a hazard.
Okay.
Is that correct, Sylvester?
That is correct.
All right, um, did anyone from Verizon want to address or comment on a question about the? Police, fire, DPW comments?
Yeah, Mister Chairman, I'd, I'd be happy to, we, um, we received those, uh, comments from the Department of Public Works. And Sylvester made, uh, revisions to the zoning drawings, uh, which I sent along to Alan earlier today. Accommodating, accommodating all of the requests of the DPW director, so. Those have been addressed and we would agree to conditions on our special permit, consistent with those four comments from the Director of DPW. With regard to the requests from public safety, um, that, that is the first we're hearing of the first, the top five, uh, feet of the tower. Um, and we would need to take a look at exactly what type of equipment the town was proposing. And where they would require that space on the tower. and where they would require that space on the tower in order to speak in an educated way on that. We would need to evaluate how that would impact the rest of our wireless equipment on the tower. But certainly, we're willing to make the tower available for free without any lease payments for town public safety equipment. We just need to work out the specifics. The one thing that I do know may be problematic for us with regard to what you read into the record was the indication that the public safety departments would like to share Verizon's generators, backup generators. If there's specific questions about that, David Vivian, who's on the Zoom, can speak more intelligently on it than I can. But my, my understanding is that Verizon does not permit municipalities or any other entity to tie into its backup generators for liability purposes. We don't want to be responsible in the event that there is an outage and the town is unable to provide public safety services due to a failure of our generator. So for that reason and other business reasons known to Verizon, they do not agree to provide its backup generator for use from the community.
Okay, well, I will get those comments on to you so you can actually look specifically at them and address them, you know, as we go forward here.
We'd be happy to.
I mean, it strikes me, I mean, just with what you said, I, I don't know enough about the technology, so I can't really comment intelligently about it. But my unintelligent comment would be that, you know, a, a sort of whole harmless agreement or something like that may be able to address Verizon's liability issues there. But, but, you know, that's a, that we can discuss that going forward.
If you don't ask, you'll never get. They said no, that's fine.
Okay, so let's move on to the board. And let me, actually, let me, before we go into the board, let me just say, I think that's all the comments from public officials or boards or, you know, departments in town. There are a number of comments from residents that we've received. You know, I think the, the most efficient way to do this is there's, they're, they're public documents, so they'd certainly be made available if anybody wishes to see them. I, I haven't had a chance to, but would go over them and redact any, you know, phone numbers, email addresses, things like that, because I don't think that's appropriate to be sharing. But certainly the substance of the comments would be made available to anybody who wishes to take a look at them. But what I typically do is just allow the people who submitted those comments to sort of basically say them, so that I'm not reading, you know, sitting here reading letter and email after email into the record and everybody's getting bored. So it's a little bit easier to do it in a more interactive way. And so when we get to the public comments, we can, we can get into that. So why don't I turn to board members? Marcus, you had started out, is there anything else that you wanted to specifically address, questions or comments?
No, nothing at this time.
Okay. Dick, was there anything that you wanted to address?
Yes, Mike, a question. After the tower is installed and everything's done, if another company wants to come in and go onto the tower, do they have to re-escalade the road again?
No.
Did I, I'm sorry, Mike, did I hear you say no?
No, the excavation is only going to take place just once.
Okay, but, I'm sorry.
But if a customer comes in, let's say, a year from now, how does he get his power to the tower? I mean, are you going to put PVC pipe underground so it's already there or there's a retrench?
There's, no, the, the only trench will take place within the compound, within the fifty-by-fifty compound. But there will be a service at the, at the site, that H-frame eight-hundred-meter box. That's where the new company will, will tap off from. That will be at the compound itself.
Okay.
Will be at the site.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, Dick?
That's it for now, Mike.
Okay. Mr. Sutton?
Not at this time, Mike.
Okay. Mr. Spina, do you have anything?
I have a couple of questions. One is, could Verizon please speak to what the lighting requirements or the lighting plans for the tower are? Either ground lighting or anti-collision, whatever's, whatever's planned?
Yes, there's, there's going to be a work light, a floodlight, right inside the compound, and it's going to be on a timer. So basically, it'll only be turned on during the time of, you know, servicemen in the site.
Okay.
What he's referring to is there going to be a light on the very top of the tower?
Right, or?
Yeah, and FAA, FAA, this is David Vivian, FAA will not require any marking or lighting on that hundred-twenty-foot tower.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks. And I guess the, the other question is, so there's a, the backup generator that's run, obviously in power outage situations. Is it a test run every once in a while?
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay, do you know when, like, what the frequency and when that is typically?
Normally, it's just, just once a month.
Was it? Yeah, I'm, I'm getting at it. I assume it's not like at six AM or something like that on a Sunday.
I mean, that can be set at any time that the town feels is necessary. If it disturbs the neighbors, which I don't think it will, we could set it up to take place at noon or, or in the morning. Whatever works.
And then just the last question is really, so the access road that's planned and the clearances of the trees and everything is, and even the, the area of the, this actual site, is that sufficiently large to support the actual construction of the tower? Or does that things have to get kind of widened at first and then grown back in after the construction?
For, for this, for this compound itself, we, we usually allow just ten feet so that trees don't overgrow into the site. The surrounding trees, so that we attend to it buffer from the chain link fence. That would be required on, on the compound. And then, and on, on the, on the actual gravel road, only trees as needed. Just a little bit above the, the twelve-foot wide road, gravel road.
Right, I think I understand that. Just the question is, does that amount of cleared area support the initial construction of the tower?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Alright, that's all the questions I have at this time.
Thank you, Dave. Jessica, any questions or comments?
Yes, my question was in regards to the distance to the closest property line from the actual site. The pad itself from the tower, we have four hundred and twenty feet, but what about from the clearing? Do we have a number on that?
That's going to meander because what they're trying to do is stay with the topography of the land. If you notice, it's not a direct shot. And that's not really regulated by the installation of the cell tower.
Yeah, but I'm just trying to imagine what some of the amount of tree clearance is going to happen and what that's going to do for the distance from people's properties. It's, if you take out half of the trees there in the center of the property, it might end up looking a lot different than just saying, well, it's four hundred and twenty feet from the tower. Well, is it only going to end up being a hundred and fifty from the corner of the cleared pad to the closest home? That's my concern.
The clearance is only around the fifty-by-fifty-foot compound and just ten-foot extra will be the buffer, nothing beyond this extra ten feet around the compound will be cleared.
So it'll be about a seventy-by-seventy-foot area that's being cleared?
That's correct.
Anything else?
Michael?
Yeah, Dick?
Why wasn't there another site, let's say, for example, up on the school, up on the hill by the school, which isn't, as a crow flies, very far from where they are right now? Why, why in the neighborhood? Why not out in some other town-owned property? Number one. And number two, if this is town-owned property, doesn't the whole town have a say in this, not just the neighborhood?
Dick, a lot of that land is outside of the wireless zone. And also, the close proximity, you'd have to be four hundred, we'll just use four hundred and fifty feet from the school or any kind of building for potential. And the, and the topography, school is pretty well utilized, the whole flat pad that's there now with their new additions. And then there was another, there was another comment, someone was asking, why isn't that the motocross? Again, the motocross track and the recreational center is outside of the wireless zone. And because, again, the topography being depressed from where this is now as well as a light of sight, you know, for proper transmissions. That's, I don't want to fill in for you, Sylvester, but I mean, there's a lot of other parameters that have been looked at.
Sylvester, if I could, Alan, just direct it to Verizon, because, you know, this is a, you know, as, as I see it from looking at what's required to be provided, it was something that I just didn't see anywhere in the application. And so I, I'm, I am very curious, as Dick is, as to, you know, whether other sites were considered and ruled out. I, I haven't heard anything tonight about that and I haven't seen anything. And there's a number of other sites over by the school or on Hudson Drive that would seem to fit into what you are trying to accomplish. So I, I just am curious, you know, what the process was there and whether there's going to be any kind of presentation or documentation about, about those other sites.
And if this is town property, wouldn't, shouldn't it come to like a, like a vote in town, in a town meeting? That's what to do with this versus just, you know, just the local people that are concerned, would the whole town have a say in it? Because it's whole town-owned?
Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd be happy to.
Yeah, why don't we defer, let's defer on the town-owned thing because that's a different question. And I think somewhat, we can get to it, but it's a different question. So let's talk about the other sites, if we could, first.
Sure. Attorney Sobe, if you could pull up the wireless overlay map that we have. That's it. And so this is a map. I'm going to let Mr. Latori.
Hold on a second, Mike. If, that's not an accurate map, I don't believe. So I, I just, just before you get started, I want to make sure, because when I go to the G I, let me just hold on a second. Let me just pull up the one that's, you know, that they sent me a picture of.
Like, that map is not the map that's at the town hall for the wireless map. I, I posted that in the chat, the official town map. I just want to make that noted. Forty Lexington Circle, Matt Sikovic.
So.
Michael, Megan, Megan had forwarded, forwarded the wireless overlay map to you. And the, it's a yellowish, the yellow highlighted areas that are.
So what I, I mean, why I asked, why I pointed that out, because what is missing on that map that you just showed was the stuff by the school extending along fifty-seven. There are a number of properties right there that are in the wireless communications district. If you need to, I can pull up, what I did was took a screen, not, I don't know what I did, printed a screenshot or whatever I did of the GIS, you know, so you can go to the south of GIS, you can overlay the district and it shows up as to specifically which properties are in that district. I'm happy to share my screen with it and, and you can see it, but I just, because that was very noticeable to me when you pulled up that drawing, you know, on the, what is that, south side of fifty-seven, there's a number of properties that are within that district.
Sylvester, would, would you mind speaking to the data that we based that map on for producing it?
Yes. No, so if you can pull it up again, just one more time, if you can share it, please. So there's, there's parts of that map, so that was the GIS map from the town. And if you notice, there's, the, the green part is what the town had shown. And what I did was I just intensified the color. So I just added that color, but that's actually the outline from the town map. And that's probably that, one of the discrepancies that you see. But it is actually the GIS map and I just highlighted the, those parcels so that they are more visible.
So, but Sylvester, just so you know, and I, and I can, we can pull it up and we can just make sure. But if you, I, I forget who's controlling this, is Steven, are you controlling this? If you could just zoom in up top there, keep, yeah, keep going in a little bit. Perfect. So maybe you could just, Steven, if I could just guide, you know, the, the hand that you have on there to your right a little bit and down to where fifty-seven is, which is that big street right below you right now. No, to the right, yep, that one is fifty-seven. Alright, so go to your left to that other, right there. That, see that, go to the right side of that neighborhood, to the right side of that. Or my, my, on the screen, I guess, to the other direction, to the, to the right-hand side of the screen. Nope, right there, right there.
Steven, he's asking you to move to the east. Thank you.
So, starting just to the left where it says number two, that property, number ten, one thirty-two, which is the school there, and five and fifty-four, all are in the wireless communications district, at least based on what I have seen. When I pull up the GIS, I, I, I'm trying to quickly pull up the photo from the one at Town Hall.
The April, the April tenth, two thousand and one.
Mr. Chair, because there appears to be a discrepancy, at least in the map, that we're showing for the first time here tonight, I would propose that, in light of the fact that you intend to continue this hearing before we're all done, we will revise our drawing and circle up to make sure we have the proper town records to reflect the full breadth and scope of the wireless overlay district and provide you with a detailed narrative of the history of which sites were considered and eliminated and why that was, so that you can get a more complete picture of how we ended up where we are.
No, that's certainly fair. And that, you know, the, the quicker you can get it in so that it can be put out there and, and people can look at it, would be ideal, though, you know, obviously, you need to take whatever time you need to do to do it.
But we could do it in a day or two, within a day.
And I, you know, again, I go to, I, I don't have an issue with you, you know, making it more colorful, so it pops and that's fine. I have no issue with that. Like I said, when you go and you pull that, when you pull that overlay, you are going to see those properties. Those are the only ones that jump out to me that are missing. There could be more, but just, you know, probably the, those are probably the most relevant ones. But, okay, alright. And as I'm looking at the map that someone took a photo of and sent to me from Town Hall, it, it is, what I have, I think, is correct. What's on GIS is correct. So those are part of that district. Dick, I'm forgetting what your second question was.
Mike, it was a question of who actually has control over the land, if it's owned by the town? Should the whole town have a say as to what, whether or not it should be sold? So you can bring it up later, you can bring it up later if you want.
No, I mean, I guess I'll just, you know, I'll put out what my thoughts are and it may be a discussion you want to have with select board rather than the planning board, because we didn't have anything to do with it. But it, my understanding is that the, the larger property, the primary property that this is being put on has been owned by the town since, I think, the late sixties. There is a small little access strip that was partially open space and partially. that was partially open space and partially reserved for a future road that was part of the development. Um, my understanding is that that was uh, subsequent to the RFP being put out and accepted. That was, um, um, brought into town. Well, it wasn't brought into town, it was brought into town control before that by a tax taking. And then it was, uh, formally brought into town control afterwards. And, um, you know, I think they, they've ultimately signed a lease agreement, um, with Verizon for that property. Um, I, you know, I don't know more about it than that, but that's my understanding of sort of the legal aspect of it, I guess, um, is from, from what I've been told and what I've seen in looking at the land records. Um, certainly anybody can correct me, but that's, that's my understanding of it. Uh, anything more, I, I, I don't know. I remember Verizon coming to us, you know, now, gosh, probably close to four years ago, um, to the planning board, just to, you know, uh, just to give us a heads up about it. But, um, I, I don't believe I was at any of the select board meetings, so I can't really speak to that.
Mr. Mopman, are you available to answer that?
Um, from what I recall, there was an article on the town meeting warrant, and I believe it was 2017, that gave authorization at town meeting that passed, uh, to give authorization to the Board of Selectmen, uh, to enter into this lease agreement. So to, to answer your question directly, Dick, yes, it already has been in front of town meeting and the article was passed.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Um, um, any other board members have questions or comments? Okay, um, I had a couple here. Um, and this is, again, this is stuff that I just didn't quite see that I thought was useful information. And there may be more as I've taken notes tonight and go over it, but, um, has there been any study that was done about sort of the, the number of residents or, uh, number of cars traveling in this, um, gap area that you are trying to cover?
Jay, would you like to answer that, please?
I, I can answer that question. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, um, as part of Verizon's analysis, we do look at, uh, you know, total population to be served. Um, you know, in, in this particular locale, um, you know, in the absence of, say, major interstates, uh, we would not be looking at, um, say, number of vehicles, you know, traveled, say, on, uh, the state roads. Um, but certainly we look at, um, you know, the, the number of, um, you know, um, households that are served by a proposed facility. I'll, I'll refer again to that map that kind of talked about the serving sector and how the installation of additional facilities, um, can help to offload and provide more dedicated service to homes and residences. Um, I, I would say this, Mr. Chairman. Um, you know, my review of, of the, of the, um, you know, of the zoning regulations, I don't have a recollection of that, uh, information being a requirement of the zoning application. But, um, if the board, um, you know, wanted to put together a, a list of questions as it related to, you know, amount of homes served or populations served by the proposed facility, uh, we have the means to provide that information in a presentation form. I'd be happy to provide that information, um, to, to help everyone make an informed, um, decision on this. Um, but again, I, I would just comment, you know, um, the proposed facility, as to our testimony, you know, um, will substantially improve both coverage and capacity in the town of Southwick.
No, I mean, I, I ask it, and, and, you know, I'm, I'm sort of a data person. I like to see the numbers and, and see what is out there. That may just be me. But, you know, at the end of the day, I believe you have to show, you know, a, a significant coverage gap. And when I looked at those, and you can, you can pull it back up if, if one of you want to share the screen of the, um, sort of color coverage maps. I don't know how best to call them there, but they had different colors for what the, what the coverage was. And you showed with the tower, uh, proposed tower, it really seemed, at least my viewing of it, is really all it did was, you know, improve somewhat this neighbor, this, you know, the neighborhood that it's being located in. It didn't really extend beyond that. And I, I guess, I get that it would be a, um, a potential backup for others, but it seemed like one of the things you were trying to do was to deal with um, significant amount of users over at the schools or the fields or the motocross or whatever else. Uh, it didn't seem to extend beyond that. It's only sort of covered what was in this neighborhood between 57 and, and South Long Yard. But I, I, you know, I, maybe I didn't quite understand the map. Um, it certainly was something new to me. So I, I, we can certainly go back over that and, and try to understand that better. But I just didn't see a huge number of individuals being, uh, affected, you know. And I, and I think that's something that has to be shown. So I just, that's, that was my question about that. That's where it went to.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to share my screen again for a couple of minutes. Uh, and in addition, Mr. Chairman, um, I think your request is perfectly reasonable. And I'd be happy to provide, uh, additional information that will be shared with the board and the public, uh, before the next hearing. So we can look at that a little bit further. Uh, I'm going to share my screen again, Mr. Chairman. If you would just please, uh, you know, confirm, um, that you can see it, sir?
I can, yes, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. So, so again, here, here's that coverage map. Um, I'll just mention, um, a couple of things. So, um, Mr. Chairman, you, you mentioned, um, you know, certainly, um, the neighborhood uh, is a, is a pretty substantial, uh, sub-development. There are a lot of homes, um, that will greatly benefit from, uh, wireless, you know, service improvements. Um, as we, uh, also included in our testimony, um, the development of this facility will provide some enhanced, um, coverage and, um, service improvements and capacity that will have, uh, impacts to the surrounding areas as well. You mentioned, um, the motocross, um, you know, that's, that's an area of the, um, of, of Southwick. And they have large events that we've received complaints in the past of, um, the lack of, of service um, in the, you know, in and around the track. Um, we've also received, you know, complaints in and around, um, the high school and the municipal compound about service issues, whether it be coverage or capacity. And, and Mr. Chairman, sometimes, um, you, you know, there, there might be an impression of, you know, uh, why can't you just put it in, in site A or, or, you know, why can't you put it in, you know, site B? Why does it have to be here? And, and so I'll say this, um, Mr. Chairman, you know, we look at a lot of different parcels, um, not only to provide, um, you know, a solution that provides the best radio frequency, you know, coverage plan toward the town, but also as Counselor Fenton mentions, um, meets all of the various bylaw requirements. We have to look, uh, into all of that. And I feel in my testimony that the proposed parcel, uh, is going to do the best job of, uh, meeting many of the coverage and capacity needs, uh, in this town. Um, again, just flipping through the, the map, I, I want to remind you that through Verizon's testimony and, and engineering analysis, there's a significant portion of the town that doesn't have the benefit of, um, reliable, robust indoor service because of the lack of signal strength, um, and the, the lack of, of capacity, or I should say the strain that's being placed on the existing facilities, uh, that will be dramatically improved through the installation of this facility, um, along not only the ingress and egress roads, but also the surrounding neighborhood. And again, it will have positive impacts on the performance of those residents in Southwick that may not necessarily live in this neighborhood, but through capacity offload, will see performance improve in their neighborhoods. Because now their proposed facilities, um, have, uh, are strained less and now have more available resources to serve traffic closer to their locales. Now, I, I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, as, as Counselor Fenton mentioned, uh, I agree with you that the map that we provided, uh, appears to have some discrepancies on, on that. Uh, I will assure you, Mr. Chairman, that Verizon will go back. We will communicate to you, um, the reason for that discrepancy so that there's full, uh, clarity, uh, to the town, the board and the residents. And we'd also be happy to take a look at every parcel, um, within that overlay. Um, so that we, um, you know, can give a full assessment, uh, as well as all the parcels that we looked at before coming to this, um, location. But again, Mr. Chairman, um, you know, there, there is a lot that goes into, uh, site selection. Uh, it's not focused on necessarily any one property or, or any one, um, building or, or any one, uh, parcel. It's a holistic approach that takes into account, uh, the coverage and capacity needs in the area, um, the distance to other approximate facilities to make sure that we're providing, uh, enough overlap to make sure that the networks are ubiquitous, meaning you can travel from site A to site B without losing service. Um, but also having a sufficient amount of new coverage, uh, so that you establish areas of, um, coverage dominance so that, um, the facilities can focus on providing a robust experience, uh, as opposed to dealing with interference with one another. Uh, all of those considerations, uh, come into wireless facility, uh, selection, placement, design. And again, we would be happy to continue to provide you, uh, with the information that the board and the public needs, uh, so that they feel that, uh, Verizon has done all its due diligence, uh, as part of its application.
Um, so the one thing that I just want to make sure, um, and it probably goes to Attorney Fenton to offer his opinion on it from a legal standpoint, but you mentioned the word, you felt this was the best location. And I, I, the way I understand it, um, you know, it doesn't have to be the best location. The town has to sort of take other factors into account. So, you know, we look at, as you saw in the bylaws, the locating it into residential areas versus, you know, um, commercial areas or less residential areas. Um, um, so we have to take those things into account. It, it, my understanding is it doesn't need to be your best first choice. It just has to resolve our, or, or, resolve is probably not even the right word. It has to address in some meaningful way, um, any significant coverage gap.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, Counselor Fenton, would you mind, um, clarifying that? I, I believe my statement was intended to be consistent with, with the law. I'd appreciate your verification.
Uh, certainly. So, Mr. Chairman, to your, to your question, um, we're, we comply with uh, all of the requirements under the wireless bylaw in the town of Southwick, uh, and with the provisions of the wireless telecommunications, uh, federal statute, the Telecommunications Act of 1996. Uh, there are other standards, uh, which I think you may be referring to. There are standards that involve, uh, federal interpretation, including the only feasible, uh, site standard, uh, which is applied when, uh, wireless applicant is unable to otherwise meet the underlying zoning requirements and is seeking protection, um, under the federal statute to, uh, trying to find the right word, to enjoin a board to grant an approval. That's not what we're doing here. We're not requesting a variance. We're in the overlay district and we otherwise comply with all of the underlying standards. Uh, if the board would, would like, and I, I think this is what you indicated, we'd be happy to, uh, provide a more robust analysis, uh, and history narrative of how we arrived at this site, uh, as our proposed location currently before you.
Well, I mean, I think it, again, you know, certainly, correct me if I'm wrong, this is what you do and not what I do. Um, but, uh, I, I think that you do, while you, you, you say you meet the requirements, and I don't necessarily disagree that you meet the, the numbers, right? I mean, you, you, you've shown all the maps and, uh, the fall zone and, uh, within the district and height and all, you know, all of those things are met without question, I, I think. Um, but there are, is some obligation for the board in the bylaws specifically to address, you know, things that are less concrete than that. Um, and I, I, I think that's, you know, I, I think the purpose of these bylaws is, you know, from a basic level, if you had a site that would accomplish a goal i- in the middle of a, uh, residential development and you had a site that would accomplish that same goal in the, um, industrial park, you would probably choose the industrial park over the residential area, um, based on the purpose and the language in those bylaws. I mean, I think, you know, and that's a pretty simple example. Um, and, and there's obviously more gray area, but that's how I understood our bylaws. And so I, I don't necessarily agree that what Verizon thinks is the best location is necessarily, you know, what the board hasn't, has an obligation to grant just because you've met the, you know, dot, you've met the, the specific, uh, meets and bounds of the, you know, uh, of the bylaw and the, in the federal law. Maybe that's just where we have to disagree. I don't, you know, and I certainly will address it with our town council and make sure I'm thinking of it correctly. But that's how I've been thinking about it. And that's why I thought it was very important to deal with the issue of alternate locations. Because, you know, like I said, I look at open land near the school and open land on the Hudson Drive on the, in the industrial park is likely meeting your goals and, you know, likely being better sites than a residential neighborhood. Um, so, you know, that's my, that's my thought on it. And, and, you know, you certainly are going to provide more and we can address it then. But, you know, that's how I understood it.
Uh, we, we would be happy to provide you with a more detailed analysis that, um, looks at any alternative site that you would like us to review. Um, our analysis to date has been restricted to sites within the overlay district. And unless, um, you'd like that analysis to include some specific sites, uh, which may or may not be a part of our site selection history narrative without your direction. Uh, you know, we would welcome that feedback. But what I would propose to do is, uh, for us to go back and provide you with a detailed analysis of what we looked at and why we ended up where we are. If, as I said, if there's something you're interested in specifically, why this site, uh, was, wasn't considered or was eliminated, uh, we'd be happy to look at any particular parcel you'd like.
No, and I, like I said, I mean, I, other than what I said, the ones that jumped out to me without looking at it in more detail were the properties, um, that were missing from that map by the school, as well as the properties across the street. Um, uh, not directly across the street, but down the street, uh, on Hudson Drive, which are, which is the industrial park. Um, you know, the other thing that it may be worth you considering, um, albeit I don't think the entire property is in the wireless district, only part of it is, which has caused an issue. Um, but I think would be something that, you know, at least possibly coming for a, for a, uh, change to the, to the scope of the district, um, to include that entire property would be the Pioneer Dairy site, which is, um, at the corner of, um, Foster and 57. Um, uh, sort of, you, you'll see, uh, I'm trying to look at the directions. This would be on the, uh, north side of, um, 57, uh, northwest. Where, we are northwest side of.
Actually, actually, that site was looked at by Verizon. And it was trying to put 10 pounds into a. And it was trying to put 10 pounds into a five-pound bag. It was not, they could not get their, their clearance, you know. Just say if you were to use a 450-foot circle and you use your GF, GIS and GPS and try to position those on properties. And Pioneer Dairy was one, but it would not work.
And that's fine. I just didn't know if that, if the district, you know, bounds were what was causing the problem versus the site itself. And so if that was an issue, I would just say, you know, perhaps take the site, the property itself, even outside of that wireless district, you know, as a whole, take that and, and run the numbers versus just using that part of the property that's in the district. Because if that's an issue, I think that that's something that, you know, would be reasonable to consider adjusting. But, you know, that's, those are the only specific ones that came to my mind when I, you know, looked at it quickly. But I'd, I'd be interested to see what you guys come back with as far as why those get ruled out.
Our narrative will include the school and Pioneer Dairy, and we do have history with both those sites.
Okay. And the other thing that I wanted to raise because it relates to those coverage maps and you were talking about sort of revamping them a little bit is Verizon's now been approved for a tower over at the Agawam Country Club. And I would assume, and I certainly, you know, you guys submitted this before that was approved. So I, I certainly understand why the map looks the way it did or the, or the coverage maps look the way they did. But I would kind of expect at least a, either that to be included in the, in the analysis or a reason provided why it shouldn't be included in the analysis because it seems like it's, you know, a, a spot that's within that area that you're trying to cover.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jay Latore here. I, I can speak to all of those comments. So first, in regards to the, the Agawam Country Club within the town of Agawam, I, I, you mentioned that the site was approved. I just want to state for the record that the board in the town of Agawam has not made a decision on that facility yet. That is still an open hearing in the town of Agawam. So as such, it wouldn't be appropriate for me to suggest to the town of Southwick that coverage, you know, may be propagating from a facility. And I'm, I'm certain Counselor Fenton would be happy to provide any information you, you need. But I can assure you, Mr. Chairman, the, the team that appears before you tonight is very essentially the same team that is representing Verizon and Agawam, and that is an open hearing as well. So, so that will speak to that first piece of it, Mr. Chairman. The other two points I'll just mention, and, and I'm happy to share my, my screen again here just for your benefit. You know, essentially, Mr. Chairman, I, I think you're, you're curious about maybe coverage in, in this area over in here, going down what, what I'm just going to call the Proven Mountain Range that extends down from Agawam into Southwick and, and then into Connecticut. You know, Verizon does have facilities in Southern Agawam and in, I believe it's Northern Suffield that certainly provides service. It, it may be hard to see here, you know, with the, the map, but you, you can see there's pretty significant topography that I'm sure you're aware of that, that, you know, pretty much establishes the, the town boundaries to the best of my knowledge. And, you know, creates a situation where, you know, the radio frequency from, from one town, from one town's facilities is not exactly in a significant way bleeding over into another town here. And so, you know, when we, we make these maps, we do the best we can to help, you know, paint the picture to the town of, of what their level of service is without adding so many facilities as to kind of create confusion of what we're proposing here. But I think it's a reasonable request, Mr. Chairman. I'd be happy to expand this map out a little bit just so you can see what I would call the first tier neighbors within the sounds to the east of the town of Southwick's border and then to the southeast. You know, there are two other facilities. There's a country club in, in Southern Agawam. I can show you that. I, I don't recall offhand the, the facility closest to the town from Suffield. But again, I'm, I'm happy to show that. Very reasonable question. I just wanted to get that record, you know, on the record about Agawam. And, and that is the reason why, even though I'm happy to adjust this map, I, I would not include, you know, that coverage in it. Really, these maps are intended to show facilities that are on air, constructed, propagating wireless services today for Verizon, and then the proposed facility, and that's all. Thank you.
So I, I guess, one, I think the Suffield one, if my memory serves me right, is a transfer station down there similar to ways in, in Southwick. There's one at the Suffield Transfer Station, which is, you know, decent distance away, I think, if, if memory serves me. The one at the country club would be only, the one at the Agawam Country Club, not the other one, would be, you know, maybe a couple miles, if that, away. I mean, I do have a little bit of issue with, and I, I could, I'll go back and look. I thought I'd read a, a council minutes that said that it was approved. But maybe I read it wrong. But I, I guess I have a little bit of an issue with things going in simultaneously and saying we don't need to consider the other one. You know, and we can kind of do both of them even though they may impact the other one. I, I, you know, I have to think more about that. But I, I think I have a little bit of an issue with that. But I would, you know, whatever you can provide to sort of more fully paint that picture, I think would be helpful because you are talking a lot about, you know, and I'm probably using a poor choice of words, but sort of backup, you know, backup coverage of, of, you know, these, these towers. And when they have great demand, you need, you're, you're pulling from other things. So I think widening that out would at least help a little bit in my mind. Maybe not anybody else's, but in mine. The other thing I don't recall seeing, and I, at least at this point in time, don't really want to get into a huge 5G discussion in any way, shape, or form. But, you know, I, is there been any consideration and ruling out of using small cells versus, you know, these large towers to deal with any coverage gap that exists?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, certainly Verizon does utilize small cell facilities across the United States and in Western Massachusetts to provide both coverage relief and, you know, capacity enhancements in areas that need them. You know, we, we look at a myriad of different, you know, solutions before we become to a municipality with our proposal. These proposals are, are, are well thought out and they take into account best wireless, you know, you know, best practices is what I'm trying to say, Mr. Chairman. You know, in, in this instance, you're, you're dealing with a couple of things. So, you know, a typical small cell most commonly is installed on some sort of street infrastructure in the, in the right of way. You know, maybe you're talking about 30 to 35 feet on average for an antenna height. You know, so basically that maybe the top of someone's roof on a, on a two or three-story home. You know, I, I think the challenges with that, particularly in a more suburban area like Southwick, is that when you're developing facilities at that short of height, when we're, we're dealing with the type of foliage that we deal with in New England, you know, six months out of the year, you know, when it becomes increasingly difficult, you know, for Verizon to provide a, an effective wireless experience, you know, to provide services for all of the residents, right? So we could, you know, you know, try to see if we could find a place to build a small cell. But, you know, when we have the opportunity to say, you know, cover and provide enhanced wireless services, enhance public safety services, you know, to a large, you know, area, you know, consistent with that. We, if we identify a parcel, if we meet the requirements of the bylaw, if we can obtain sufficient spacing to provide a robust wireless, you know, network in terms of ingress and egress from site to site, you know, that is, you know, an industry standard approach to wireless communications facilities development. Certainly, small cells have their place within a wireless communications network. But we're still dealing with, you know, a town that is pretty substantial in size and has three facilities that do provide quite a bit of service from, you know, near the center of the town. But, you know, also relies on facilities from outside of town to provide service into it. So we think the use of a tower is appropriate. I think, you know, if, if you look back on, on the maps, you would see that the spacing is pretty consistent with the distance from the other facilities in, in town. The proposal is, is actually, as, as I can see from my notes, a little shorter than the other facilities that are in town. And it's still our testimony that it's going to meet all of our, you know, coverage gap concerns as well as inefficient service concerns.
Okay. All right. So I'm, any other, any other board questions? Wanted to sort of at least get some public officials to weigh in and get a little bit into the public before we get too late here. I mean, at some point, we're going to have to call it and move it to another meeting. But I want to get some other input. But if there's any, you know, pressing board questions, I'm happy to entertain those right now.
I don't know if it's a pressing question, Mike, but just something that while Verizon's going and maybe coming back at the next meeting with some additional information, I wondered, did they do any analyses of the potential of augmenting the equipment on any of the existing towers? And what potential, you know, would that be able to resolve issues that they might be having with capacity or coverage? And if they haven't any of those analysis, I'd be curious to see what those might be.
No, I think that's a, that's a good question. I don't direct it to whoever the appropriate to answer it. Would that be Jay or would it be?
Yeah, I apologize, Mr. Chairman. I was double muted. Yep, no, we've all been there with Zoom. Mr. Chairman, you know, Verizon is, is constantly updating its wireless facilities to provide additional spectrum that Verizon owns to utilize the greatest, you know, possible antenna technology, radio access, you know, technology, you know, throughout the network. You can imagine in this type of technological infrastructure, you know, what we call, you know, you know, there used to be a saying in wireless that, you know, things got obsolete every, every three years. And, and now it's, it's faster than that. And, you know, you might imagine, you might have people in your lives that, you know, are upgrading their phones every 24 months, for example. The pace of technology is significant. The growth of traffic is significant. What I'd like to do is, is take a little bit of information back. You know, it's, it's a large network. Verizon strategically invests its money every year in different wireless facilities across the United States. I believe we can provide some information to you regarding facilities on a Southwick that have had their wireless, you know, facilities enhanced in, in the last year in terms of, of that, you know, update antenna in terms of saying the greatest amount of capacity. But it's, it's my testimony that we're, we're, we're still in that position even with the enhancement of those facilities, greater spectrum, newer antennas. You know, we're still dealing with a coverage gap. But we can't escape from the fact that wireless moves away from a tower and they experience trees, buildings, other terrain. Signals attenuate. They lose power at a distance. And the end result is that individuals that are further from those facilities suffer. Their phones then have to work harder to try to stay connected to the network. That drags down the performance of the network and makes a poor experience, not only for those folks further away from the tower, but also close to the tower as well. And so the development of new facilities augments, you know, service in a number of ways what we talked about previously. But, you know, we, we certainly look at all those things. Be happy to look at our notes from the last year or so to, to see the work that we've done in Southwick recently. But again, you know, our testimony will be that, you know, even with augmentations to our existing facilities, the need for this facility is essential, that it relieves the coverage gap and that it addresses ineffective service.
Any other board members? Okay. So why don't I open it up to town officials who may want to have any, have any questions or comments this evening from Verizon? Anyone? Okay. So I'm going to open it up to public comment and question.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Just, and we're happy to participate in that. But you mentioned at the last hearing that there may be a desire for another balloon float. And while we're very confident with the photo simulations that we've prepared, in the interest of time, if, if the board did want another balloon float before the next hearing, we would ask that you deliberate on that and instruct us on how you'd like that to be performed and when.
So, fair question. I can tell you my opinion, which is I do appreciate that you did it in March and the photos you've taken and submitted or simulations you've submitted. I, I, I don't, I guess my opinion is that I don't feel that Verizon should be the one who chooses the sort of season that, that, that gets taken in. You know, we're sort of butting up against a season where the leaves will start being off the trees, which is going to be, you know, how it is for a good, you know, four, five months of the year. I think it's probably, at least in my mind, more appropriate to do it when some of the leaves are off the trees so that people can kind of see what they're going to be seeing for a good portion of the, you know, a number of months at least. So getting it done before the next meeting doesn't quite seem right to me. I think it has to go out a little bit longer. But I, I'll, that's just my opinion. And I'm obviously one board member. I'm certainly welcome to listen to any other board members' thoughts as well as your response to that. But let me just see what the other board members think about it. And then we can kind of go from there.
I would say, Michael, in addition to seasonality being in question, that we want to make sure that we give all residents enough time to be aware when the balloon test is going to be happening. And, you know, people are, have sometimes have to give two weeks' notice for a day off to be able to make sure that they're able to see it. I don't know how long Verizon keeps the balloons up. And if, in regards to that, how tall one balloon is in compared to the total amount of vertical space that could be taken up from the tippity top of a whip antenna down to the level of three or four of potential cell service units. If it's a five-foot-tall balloon versus 25 feet worth of width of structure up top, that's not comparable. So that's just kind of my concern.
No, and I, I mean, I, and that's why I, I think we were getting into, at least in my mind, why I was asking about the dimensions of that antenna up the top. Because, you know, putting up one of my kids' balloons up there at 120 feet is not really all that meaningful because the thing is, you know, maybe a foot wide. I, I, it doesn't do much. But, you know, having something that is. I, I, it doesn't do much, but, you know, having something that is, um, that is, demonstrative of what's going to be there, I think, is a better way to do it. And frankly, I don't know anything about the balloon test, so I don't know if this is a, a legitimate issue or not. You may very well be using a balloon that that size. I don't, I don't know what is being used, but I, I would want something that simulates to the best you can, uh, you know, what is going to be there so people can actually see, see what's going to be there.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yep.
Uh, the photo simulation packet that we've submitted is prepared with leaf-off conditions. So we've already submitted to the board photo simulations that demonstrate the visual impact of the tower without leaves on the trees.
But those don't address all visual lines from property owners. They were photos taken from, uh, public ways, not people's private properties. Uh, they were taken at the beginning of March, middle of March. There's more leaves on the trees then than there is December.
And the other thing is-
Photo package isn't enough for me to vote a yes on anything.
And, and they were done without notice. And so it was, it was your choice as to where those photos were taken from, not the, the abutters or the other folks around here who, you know, can go out and take a look at it and see whether it impacts them. So I, you know, and not, I, I, I don't want to suggest that there was anything untoward about it or that you didn't do an accurate representation of what's out there. I mean, that's not my suggestion at all. I just think, uh, even if it's just for public confidence, I think you have to do something with notice and let people themselves see it. I, I, you know, to me, that's, that's how it needs to be done. I, I don't, I, I don't know how they can just say, okay, I'm sure you did it exactly right and you, and you looked at it from the where I want to see it. I mean, you certainly didn't go on public or private property. So, you know, that in and of itself, as Jessica just mentioned, eliminates a lot of the views that people are gonna have. So, um, so, go ahead, Mike, I'm sorry.
We would, we, we certainly want to cooperate with the board. Um, and when we, uh, prepared the simulations, we did so in compliance with the bylaw, which doesn't, um, require notice of any kind. So that's why we didn't. Um, we would be happy to, uh, as I indicated, provide another balloon float. And if the board so chooses, we'll notice whatever they feel are appropriate parties. We could even take the additional step of offering at this time to perform, uh, photo simulations at the private properties of residents who are interested in doing so, as long as they, uh, enter into a written agreement allowing us to access their property for that purpose. The reason the first simulations couldn't be done in that way is because we can't just go into somebody's backyard and take photos with, without their permission. So we certainly would be willing to do that, whatever, uh, time of day and whatever types of notice the board would like us to, uh, provide for that balloon float, we would do. And, uh, at the discretion of the chair, if you want to have residents sign up through the planning board and sign written agreements allowing us to access, uh, their properties, we would also be happy to do that. Those were not options that were available to us, uh, when we prepared the first simulation packet. Um, what, what I would have to huddle up with our team about and, and discuss is, uh, the delay, um, Mr. Chairman, that you're, that you're requesting regarding the leaf-off conditions, particularly in light of the fact that the simulation packet that we've submitted is with complete leaf-off conditions.
No, and again, I, I, that's fine. I just, I, I don't, to me, there seems to be a bit of a, disparity, I guess I would say, maybe that's the wrong word, but I, I don't, I don't think it should be the applicant who gets to choose the conditions and the locations and everything else. That seems to be not the proper way to do it. It also doesn't seem to be a good way from a, you know, public confidence, um, standpoint to do it. So, um, excuse me, I, 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 you know, that's where I'm inclined. I, I'm, again, I'm certainly willing to listen to other members of the board about that, but that's my inclination. I would also kind of want just a little bit more information about, you know, size of the balloon and things like that, just so we can, uh, cause I, I said, I honestly, I don't, I had, don't have a clue. So, you know, having a little bit more data on that and someone describing what the, the, the test is exactly and what the size of things are and what they're doing would be, you know, helpful to me at least, um, to fully understand it. So, I mean, I think, you know, my inclination would be to, you know, continue this out to, for two weeks and, you know, come with all the relevant information and prepare to schedule it at that point in time and, and everybody would, would know when it was. Um, you know, I, I, frankly, it's, it's, I think a lot of the discussion can be done, you know, without having that been done. I mean, that's more of a, you know, thing that can be finalized at the end. And if some discussion arises from it, we can have it. But, um, you know, I don't think it's a, a, uh, gonna be a major discussion. It is what it is, right? And you're gonna have photos that shows this or this, don't show it. And, um, you know, it'll be evidence, but it's not, I'm not sure there's gonna be a ton of discussion about it. It, it kind of, it, it kind of speaks for itself. So, um, I think a lot of the discussion and questions and comments can be undertaken and the evidence submitted, um, you know, prior to that being done.
Mike?
Yeah.
I would think that, uh, we should hold off on a balloon test until we figure out where are we gonna put the tower first and then at least get some other options. If we're looking at maybe Hudson Driver's, Hudson Driver's School, maybe we could hold off on the balloon test until we get those areas picked up.
I could be wrong and I, and certainly correct me, um, Mike, if you, if you need to. But I think stuff is staked out, I think, um, out there. I think they have the location, at least, or at least at one point it was. Um, and it may be worthwhile, um, if it's not clearly staked out to do that, so that people can go out there and kind of see where it is, um, uh, cause it is town property, which they can access, I believe, right now. So, um, um, is it staked out currently, you know?
Well, it certainly was at one point. Is it staked out, Sylvester, do you know?
Yes, it's staked, uh, but we could definitely revisit to make sure it's still, the stakes are still there.
Okay, um, so I mean, I believe the location is pretty well set. Um, like, you know, as they mentioned, they have done, uh, balloon tests in the past. So I'm assuming that's where they did it from, is where it's staked out, out there. Um, so, and it's certainly something to go, go out there and, and look at where it is. Um, and I just saw a comment that says that it's still staked out. So certainly folks can go and take a look at it. Um.
Mike, can I just suggest something else?
You can.
Back in 2017, they did a, a balloon test and they did take additional pictures. Perhaps they could probably utilize the 2017, um, maps, the one that they did this past spring, and it might allow more coverage. Cause I know at that time in 2017, myself and Art Waller were requested to attend the, uh, where the pictures were being taken, document, all of that. So they, they do have two, two sources, and in each source, there were no leaves on the trees.
No, and I, you know, I, I certainly am one that the more, the, the better, right? I mean, if you have other photos to sort of generate it, it's, it's more evidence and, and please submit them. But, um, you know, I, I, I have trouble sort of conceptualizing, um, a, 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 a hearing where you don't allow, the abutters and other interested parties to, to see it themselves with notice. I mean, that seems like an appropriate thing to be done and it hasn't been done. So, um, I, I, I think it has to be done. And I think at this point in time especially, but just generally, I think the idea of doing it with, you know, some degree of leaf-off condition is, is, you know, the proper test to do, because that's how people are gonna be seeing it for a good portion of the year.
We're certainly, we're certainly willing to cooperate with the board and, and do the test and provide the notice. We're just, um, we're anxious to move forward, Mr. Chairman. We, this application was first filed, uh, in early April and-
No, I understand, but, you know, there was some stuff going on. Um, and, uh, so we've been, we've been, you know, moving on it, uh, I think appropriately. It's, we didn't start doing meetings until I, I don't even remember when our first meeting was. Um, but, um, you know, I know I spent a couple of months as a school teacher, um, that didn't have a ton of time for planning board meetings, uh, you know, trying to homeschool the kids. So, um, you know, we're getting back at it and I, I think, you know, I, I think we'll try to move it along as efficiently as we can. I, I'm not trying to delay on any, you know, uh, intentional way. I just, I think, uh, allowing people to see that is a, is a pretty important part of, um, this application and would allow them to make up their minds about, you know, what they see and whether they can see it. All right, so, um, my, we've been at this for three hours now. Um, I, I, I'm hesitant to cut off before any public comment, but I'm not sure I want to go much farther past, um, you know, 10:30 or so. Um, just because people are probably getting a little bit tired and, and losing the energy here. But I, I don't necessarily want to cut off any public comments from this evening, because everybody's been sitting here watching this for three hours. And it's certainly been informative and, and helpful, I think. But, um, some public input, I think, would be appropriate, given the number of people who are here and have participated or have listened. Um, so, um, you know, what I want to do, um, the other thing I do need to do is, I, I, I do want to check about having to read into the record the comments that were submitted. Um, I certainly can, and if I need to, I will. Um, they're, they're available. Um, what I was inclined to do was let people sort of make their comments and questions that they have submitted in writing and have a more interactive discussion about it. And I, I think I want to do that now, so I'll at least get to some of those folks to sort of start a discussion. But, you know, and then I'll touch base with council about whether we, you know, there is a requirement that we read those in word for word, because there is not an insignificant amount of, uh, comments and letters that have come in. So, um, let me start first, um, because there is a number of questions with, hold on a second, let me just pull up and I, cause I'm forgetting his last name, but his first name is Matt. So if he wants to hop on, he can, but I can't remember his last name.
Yeah, Mike, this is Matt Sikovic, 40 Lexington Circle. I, uh,
Yes.
Mr. Fenton, I wrote quite a few emails, uh, to the board. I really, Mike, I, I don't think it's appropriate this evening to go into all those details. I find it very, very frustrating that we can't get a methodology to get that all the comments, all the public, public comments available. Why can't Verizon provide some source of, like a knowledge board or a, uh, you know, something on the web that we can go to that would have all the public comments, all the engineering documents, all the analysis, like a one-stop shopping for the residents that are going to be impacted, instead of us sitting in front of a PC for three hours trying to process what you guys are proposing versus what we're all dealing with in regards to processing all the information?
Yeah, listen, I, so two parts of that, let me just jump in quickly because-
Is that possible? Because I, can I finish for a second, Mike? I'm sorry.
No, you can, sorry, yep.
There's other major utilities within the boundaries, uh, that would provide that to the residents. It'd be on their website, where you could click the hyperlink and find out about a project, the project documents. You, you guys, I don't even know who you guys really are and what you represent. I mean, through this meeting, I've been able to do that. But Sylvester, I, I think he's a consultant, I don't really know. I understand you're an attorney, so not to waste any more time, I'm just looking for the proper information so as a resident, I can talk to the townspeople in an intelligent manner. I'm not trying to block technology. I think it's important. I realize that. But my confidence on your presentation, Mike, is basically out the door. We're 0 for 2. Now we're talking about, you guys did a site evaluation with, with a, with a site map that wasn't even the right one. So you can hear our, my frustration. So on that note, I don't feel important to read my comment, uh, but I would love to have a place where my comments could be placed and people could comment on them and understand the, the setup.
So let me address that, um, just from the board perspective. Uh, uh, you know, one, make sure you know and have seen the, the full application, at least, you know, everything that we have is sitting on the planning board website. So you can certainly go and access that. Um, uh, there's a, I forget what it's, Verizon Cell Tower Proposal, I think it's what it's called.
Mike, Mike, in all due respect, that was just posted after people asked for it. And secondly, I had to ask for the site map, the wireless site map, and that was emailed to me. I couldn't find that. And I was told that was in Town Hall. And I was also told under a pandemic, you guys don't want all our people, you know, going into the Town Hall, going through different site maps and overlay maps and- My, my point is, if they're gonna do a project of this magnitude, which they made it very clear that it's a huge asset for them and extremely important, why wouldn't they make on their website or some site all the project documentation available so people can make the right decisions?
And I can't speak for them. What I will say is this, just with the comments, I mean, we are the board who is considering this. We are the ones taking comments. So to, to some degree, it is on us to set up the, the system. Um, things are, uh, you know, much more difficult in the current circumstances. We are doing the best we can. It wouldn't necessarily run this way, um, uh, if we were sitting at Town Hall having these hearings. Um, I, like I said, there's a number of, you have your emails that you've sent, um, that were forwarded to me or else-
And, and, and mind you, more emails are coming as I have more knowledge of Jex. So a lot now after this presentation, a whole plethora of more questions I have. And I don't know if you guys want me to just send them to your address.
And that, you can email them to us, they become part of the public record.
Okay.
And, you know, I'll be honest with you, my, and I'm, I'm happy to, to listen to what folks have to say, but I, I'm slightly hesitant to put written public comments accessible on a website. That to me is a little bit different than making them accessible at Town Hall. Um, putting aside personal information like emails and, and phone numbers and things, the idea that they are accessible to anyone just sits a little bit uncomfortably with me. Um, but if people are okay with that, uh, you know, we can do it. I just, that, that, to be fair, was my decision that I get a little uncomfortable when you post stuff on the internet for anybody to see. That's a different thing than making something publicly available at Town Hall and emailing, you know, Alan or me and saying, can I get a copy of it? Uh, we'd be certainly happy to provide it, but having it accessible online is a little different to me. And I, and I just, I, I want to make sure people are understanding that that's my decision and I'm happy to change it. I just, uh-
Well, Mike, what is the, what's the legal definition of a public meeting and a public comment? I'm not a lawyer, and I'm sure we have one, but my thought is it's either recorded on some tape or it's probably posted to some letter or some, I mean, it's public, it's public information, so.
Yeah, and I, and, and Matt, let me just back up, because as I said before, I need to check with Town Council about reading things in. You know, if, yeah, a smaller hearing, if we get, you know, one letter from DPW that has like three comments on it, I just sit and I read it in, right? And that's, and that's what I've always done. When we have, you know, I, I don't even know how many letters and emails and whatever, you know, I'd be spending an hour of this hearing reading those in. Um, that to me is not the most productive way to do it. Um, and, you know, there's certainly the, any comments are available. I just, and again, this is my opinion and I, I'm a, I'm an attorney, just so everybody knows. And, you know, this is, it's, it's an issue that comes up, at least in my, my world, is, you know, when you're dealing with courts, what becomes available and publicly available if you walk down to the courthouse and you go get it versus what is available when you go online and can you click on a button and get it? Those are two different things, you know, especially in the world of Googling people's names and their, you know, what they think. This, those are two different things. So I get slightly uncomfortable putting stuff online.
And again, Mike, I, I don't want to take up- And again, Mike, I, I don't want to take up everybody's time. Here's my concern. I had to go get a wireless site map. I assume that Verizon did their homework. I assumed the professional engineer signed off on the proposal. And yet I very quickly realized that the site map that you had had nothing to do with what was in Verizon's hyperlink on your website. They didn't even have the right one. So how can you begin to do the proper engineering analysis in regards to picking the, the correct location for a cell tower when the company who's doing the analysis doesn't even have the right map?
And that's a fair question. And I think they're going
And I don't think that's been answered, Mike. I don't. And I'm really concerned with everything that's been done to date. And the only way to make it transparent, Mike, it's, my opinion has got to be a methodology that, or a method that, you know, everybody's concerns are out there so we can all work together to get them all answered. I don't know. I'm not a lawyer.
No, and that's
The laws are so
It's legit, it's a legitimate issue. And I, I, you know, I, if you keep coming to these meetings and you keep making your comments, that's, you know, one of the constraints that we have is that these have to be done on a, on a, you know, in front of the board with the board discussion, it has to be done in a public hearing and a, and a, you know, accessible to everybody. So we can't just have conversations or things like that. Um, so that everybody understands what we're considering and what we're doing and we're doing it in open. Um, what I would suggest, and you know, I will look into more about how to make the public comments more public, if you will, um, accessible during this timeframe when you can't walk down the town hall and get them. I will think about how we can best do that.
Well, and one more, and one more point.
Hold on a second, Matt. Let me just say one other thing. Uh, the other thing I would say to the extent that you wanted to have group discussions, uh, you know, among the butters or people, I mean, you certainly go talk to them, but what I've been trying to do to make sure everybody has notice and uh, is posting on Facebook, you know, when these are occurring, um, what the, you know, information to get into them on, things like that. You know, I haven't been participating, but it, you know, looking at those, there have been no shortage of comments on those things. And that may be a forum where you can, um, you know, certainly have a discussion if you wish to talk to other butters and interested parties because they seem to be responding in that manner. So that, you know, the, the Southwick related.
Yeah. And I think, I think I might have misdirected you a little bit. I want to bring you back. My concern is there was a presentation by one of the engineers, I forgot the guy's name, but the proposal on your site on the, on the, the Verizon site on the Southwick Planning Board website didn't have his, he didn't have his presentation posted previous to the meeting. So when I just, when I saw different maps and things that they were bringing up in his, you know, he had, he literally had, uh, uh, load maps and things like that. That wasn't public. That came out tonight. We had no time to prepare as residents to even begin to process the, the presentation. So my thought is that's a responsibility of Verizon. They should provide, they should be providing all the appropriate engineering, science, health, uh, you name it. That would impact the location of this cell tower in, in, in Southwick. I haven't seen it at all. I've seen the small presentation that's posted on your website, but that other gentleman who presented his presentation, that's the first I saw of it. And believe it or not, I would love to understand more of the science because I mean, I think I have that right. So that's my concern. It just seems a little disorganized and I respect everything you do for the town and the understanding of the pandemic and the Zoom meeting, but there's gotta be a way for Verizon to get all the information out to us. So we can process what the heck is going on. That's, I'll end it on that. I appreciate the moment. I appreciate Verizon for doing what they're doing as well as the board. But I've, I've, I gotta be honest. I'll end it on this. I have lost a lot of confidence so far. Not in the process that you put together, but in the present, presentation that a multi-billion dollar company presented. I thought we would have saw better. So.
Let me just go, um,
I was gonna get that. So I'm gonna go on mute.
Mr. Chair, if I'm just, just to respond very, very briefly, if I may.
Yes, you can, yeah, briefly, if you could.
So all of the materials that you've seen tonight have been previously provided, uh, to the planning board and are available on the planning board's website. The one exception to that is the overlay map that we pulled up in response to a question that we received from a board member. Um, we've learned that that map is inaccurate. And upon being requested by the board to provide a more thorough analysis of our alternative reviews, um, we will do that before the next hearing.
Okay.
May I respond to Mr. Fenton, please?
No, no, I, I think let's just move, let's just move forward. So a few other folks can say something, their, their, what they want to say tonight. And then we can kind of continue this on to the next meeting and everybody can get
That's fair, Mike. I appreciate it very much. I'm, I'm sorry to take up so much time, but
That's okay.
I just wanted to make it clear as a resident who's probably going to see the tower that it's, this whole thing is slightly confusing, specifically since the map they used to do the analysis of the location wasn't the correct map. Think about that, people. Think about that.
And I'll, you know, the other thing to sort of mention is this, the audio of this will be made available as soon as it can on the website. So you can go and, and listen to it as well. If you need to, if you need to, you know, go back and listen to what was said. Um, the, I, I received a comment from Craig Harrow. Um, you know, uh, you don't have to speak, but if you wish to talk about anything today, you're certainly welcome to. I figure I go through who has it. Is he, is, do I see him on here?
Yeah. Mike, I, I did want to just point out as a 25 year taxpayer, the town of Southwick and as a direct butter to this project, I'm a little disturbed that what I would term to be double talk by some of the gentlemen from Verizon tonight. They went through great detail to, uh, state their case as to how the, uh, coverage is affected and needs improvement in this area. But Verizon's coverage map readily available on their website doesn't show any coverage gaps in this area. So it's kind of talking out of both sides of their mouth and, you know, both can't be true. I'm also convinced that, uh, after listening intently to the discussion tonight, that alternative sites have not been properly vetted. And that is the number one issue that needs to be resolved before any of this moves forward. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Craig. Um, uh, the other one that I have, um, a few letters from is Peter Flynn. If Mr. Flynn, you wish to have any comments tonight, you're certainly, the floor is open to you. Uh, and I apologize because I don't know if he's on or not, but okay, um, maybe he's not on. Um, all right, let me see if there's any others that I have.
Hello, can you hear me? This is Phil Lassito on 15 Partridge Lane. Um, I was one of the few residents that was there on this, uh, 2017 and I, um, saw the balloon float. I drove around the neighborhood. And, uh, when you, uh, drive from Foster Lane down Patriots, uh, Patriots Way turns towards the right. And then it comes up onto Lexington Circle. When you get up on Lexington Circle, you can clearly see the balloon um, on your left in a car. So all of the houses in that area are going to see the top of that tower. And it, it just, I, I, for me, I, I can't believe we're actually having a conversation about sticking an antenna in the middle of a neighborhood. I understand all the property thing, the land is there and all that, but I still just can't believe that we're talking about putting an antenna in the middle of a neighborhood when Southwick has just so much land and um, I still don't see evidence that they can't put it somewhere else. But I really think that once we make a determination of where this is the only site that they can put it in, the balloon float would be a good idea, especially for the people at the end of Patriots Way and the eastern side of Lexington Circle, because you will be able to see the tower. And, uh, the other places, the, the other thing is, is the pictures are, the way they were represented, there's, there's nothing really you could do about it. But the, um, uh, you know, the balloon looks much further away in a picture than it did when I was driving around.
Um, Let me go, just grab a couple more comments before we sort of wrap up here, if you wouldn't mind, uh, Mr. Lazzito.
Okay.
Um, I know I've, um, I know Celeste St. Jacques has reached out to me, so I will see if she has any comments. Though I suppose as a town official, she could have spoken up before, maybe she doesn't, but, uh, if she does, she's welcome to, um, to, to speak.
Actually, my husband had a pretty interesting question that is probably pretty significant because he was asking about, um, the radio frequency because it's kind of his field. So I would do want him to ask that. But someone did ask a question which kind of, there are studies that show there is tree death. And maybe when Verizon comes back, maybe they could give us maybe some, maybe they have studies that kind of address this whole tree issue because I'm sure they probably do have some studies. Am I correct, Mr. Fenton, that you probably have studies about how the environmental effects of trees near it? Because there's a study from 1990, I'm sorry, from 2016, a Harvard University study that states of tree death around the site of a cell tower. So can you maybe next time, if you don't have that information right now, could you maybe come back next time and give us some of that information?
Mr. Chair, if you'd like me to respond, I will.
Yeah, if you could, I'm sorry, Mike. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. Uh, in, in my experience, I haven't seen any studies that indicate tree death as a result of a wireless tower. If, if you're talking about, uh, tree death as a result of radio frequency emissions, um, we can uh, report back on that. I'm not a radio frequency expert on the impact of emissions on trees, but we will ask that question and have it answered, um, before the next hearing.
Okay. So my husband did have a question about, um, the distance it's safe to be around the tower. And I think the reason why he was asking this about, you know, kid, people are in the woods, kids are in the woods. What is a safe distance for people to be around the tower?
You know, I'd, I'd leave, I'd leave that to Verizon if they have any, if they can offer anything tonight or, you know, certainly could defer to the next meeting and follow up on that. But, um, did you guys have anything you wanted to offer this evening? Mike?
I'm happy to answer that, Mr. Chairman. Again, Jay Latorre with Verizon. Um, you know, uh, the, the only thing that the residents need to concern themselves as it relates to any safety question um, related to Verizon's proposal is to know that, uh, Verizon, uh, has their equipment. Um, you know, in a 50 by 50, uh, compound, uh, it will have a, a lock on it. Uh, there will be an information sign on it. So if anyone, uh, had a question about the facility or the town needed to gain access for any reason, um, there, uh, is a phone number that they can call Verizon's Network Operations Control Center, uh, to get more information about the facility. Um, but there, there is no safety concerns associated with, uh, walking around the, um, the 50 by 50 compound. Um, there's no safety concerns with walking through the woods. Uh, there's no, uh, safety concerns associated with being in the backyard and, and, and all of this is defined by the FCC. The FCC sets the standards for radio frequency, uh, emissions. And Verizon's responsibility is to provide, uh, information that shows that we comply with those standards. And, and the only thing I'll mention, only because I think someone, um, might have written it into the chat, Mr. Chairman, someone I think had a question of turning on and turning off antennas. And I'll just comment just in case people are curious. I know folks, um, are, are appreciating the opportunity to ask more questions and learn more. Um, you know, when wireless facilities are built, when they're operating, uh, and, and in service and modifications have to occur to them, um, you know, the, the typical protocol is a, uh, a wireless, uh, construction company that has training in radio frequency emission safety. Um, is climbs the tower, they do it safely. Uh, they work behind the antennas, they work one sector at a time. And they, they power down the, uh, antennas and the radios on the sector that they're working at. So, so really in, in essence, um, and, and, and I don't say this jokingly, I say this to be serious. The only real concerns that could be associated with radio frequency safety on this tower would be if, um, an individual, um, walked into the compound, uh, climbed the 120 foot tower and, and, and stood on top of the platform that hosts the antennas. Um, and I think Verizon, uh, puts into, um, you know, its protocols, you know, standard precautions. We, you know, the compound is locked. It's, it's not easy to access. There's no, uh, you know, there's, there's no climbing pegs. Uh, and Sylvester can speak to this. I think there may be climbing pegs in the tower, but they're not until, you know, say, uh, I'm guessing at least 20 feet in the air, uh, before we get to them. Um, and, um, you know, we, we meet all the requirements, you know, there, uh, I don't have any, um, you know, personal information, um, associated with, with any, you know, um, um, I think the other question that was asked was about how radio frequency emissions could affect, um, you know, vegetative, you know, um, plant life around there. But, um, I, I agree and concur with Counselor Fenton. We're happy to look with it and get an answer. And I would just say to, um, the resident to ask the question that referenced the Harvard study, i- if that can be shared with the chair uh, and the chair can share that with Attorney Fenton, we're, we're happy to read it. We're happy to respond to it. I'm similarly, um, not familiar with, um, any sort of published health study on, on, on that. So I, I couldn't comment to that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um, here's what I would say, and I would just sort of, um, also representative Verizon folks that, you know, there's the comments section here. Um, at the end, I'll certainly save a copy and we can provide it. And if, so you can see the questions that are out there and my inclination for the next meeting, um, and did Megan get back on? I just want to see whether, or can she, uh, just let me know if we can do it at 7:15 on the next meeting.
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Um, so.
Mike, uh, Marcus Phelps here. Are we going to be ready to, uh, discuss this at the next meeting or would we go into November by time, uh, someone's talking about a balloon test would leaf off?
Well, Mike, a- again, I'm open to suggestions and I'm certainly, we can discuss it, but my inclination and my suggestion would be to continue this to the October 20th meeting. Um, we can get through, you know, I suspect there will be a, a good number of public comments that we can get through, um, and we can get further information from Verizon as they've said they, they're going to provide. Um, what I was going to say is, you know, if Verizon wants to go through those, the chat questions and comments, um, and perhaps be able to address some of them. Um, you know, sort of proactively at the next one, that would probably be useful. Uh, my, my inclination would be to set up the next one to have a brief sort of, um, further presentation by Verizon to, you know, with the further information we've discussed tonight, as well as addressing some of these comments perhaps. Uh, and then get right into public comments so that people can, uh, have their, uh, their questions and comments, uh, out there. Uh, because they've certainly spent the time listening this evening and, and hopefully get that started toward the beginning of the next meeting so that they can participate, uh, early in the meeting.
Will alternate sites be part of their proposal for the next meeting?
My understanding is that they were going to provide, provide that information for the next meeting, um, but
To the level of detail and analysis that they presented for the Lexington Circle area?
Well, I, you know, they're going to present their information and we can assess it and comment on it at the time. But my understanding is that they were going to address that issue and present that information at the next meeting. Is that right, Mike?
That's correct.
Okay. So, um,
And will, and the residents have time to digest that before it's presented?
My understanding is that it's going to be to us reasonably quickly, um, I, you know, in the, in the front part of the two weeks, right? Is that what you said? It's, it's not going to be a, at least that portion of it, dealing with alternate sites is not going to be a, um, yeah, you know, a last minute type of thing. You're going to get it to us reasonably. That what I heard before, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm just going
That, that, that's accurate, Mr. Chairman. I, I think we can get you most of this information by the end of this week, if not all of it. And certainly the alternative site analysis.
Okay. So that's, and, and that's, um, you get it to me and we'll Okay, so that's, and, and that's, um, you get it to me and we'll get it posted and, and, um, so check the website. I'll certainly put something on Facebook and, and direct people to it when it gets posted. Um, so, um, I will post, uh, in the chat, the information right now for the next meeting. Um, the meeting ID and passcode. Um, but just so everybody has it in case you're not X, uh, avail, you know, they'll have the chat available. The meeting ID for the October 20th, 2020 Planning Board Meeting, uh, which begins at seven o'clock. This continued hearing will be scheduled for 7:15. The meeting ID is 836, uh, 7916, 6979. I'll repeat that again, 836, 7916, 6979. Uh, is the meeting ID and the passcode. Is 913, 153. I'm just putting that in there now. Um, uh, the, you know, again, I'll post this, this will be posted, uh, at, at various sites, it'll be on the agenda and uh, I will post it on Facebook so that people have it accessible. Uh, but that's the information for the next meeting. Um, and the phone number remains the same. Um, I forget which one I've been posting, but there's a, there's a number of them you'll see on the agenda. Uh, I think I've been, we've been posting the New York one, which is 929-205-6099. Uh, and then you have to put in the meeting ID. So, um, anything else from a more procedural, uh, standpoint that anybody needs to address before we, uh, close up this hearing for the evening and continue it on to, uh, the next meeting?
Mike, this is Matt Sikovic again. I'm sorry. Um, I sent the board a bunch of, um, PDF files of uh, major science, uh, articles regarding the effects of cell towers and, and humans. Um, and I, that, that should be presented to the, all the people that are either on this call or concerned with this topic. I don't know how you do that, but, uh, I don't, and I don't even know if you got it, but it was a PDF file with a bunch of scientists with various, uh, links to multitude of scientific data and medical studies in regards to cell tower and, uh, the effect on humans. So.
So.
I can, I can forward that to you if you want, uh, again, or.
I haven't seen it, so you're welcome to. And, you know, I will assure you that over the next day or two, uh, I'm gonna sit and figure out the best possible way to make things available. I mean, I think that kind of stuff is, is fine if we put it, you know, out there in, in a sort of, um, yeah, you know, uh, accessible place on the website, you know, of, of stuff that's being submitted, uh, to the board. I, that stuff is fine. It, when it gets into personal, uh, information and comments, that gets a little more hairy to me. But, um, so let me, let me think about how we're gonna best do that, but I'll certainly, certainly reforward it to me. I just don't recall seeing it. So, um, but, uh, I may have just missed it. Uh, anything else procedurally before we?
Can I just ask one question? Um, this is Amber Bach, uh, Ten Pineal. I'm just curious, are we already as a town in a legal contract with Verizon in regards to this specific property to put a cell tower in as a town? Like, are we already in something binding in regards to this specific property?
Well, I'll certainly defer to the select board members who are on the call and they can offer, you know, more detail. But my understanding is that there's a lease agreement, though any lease agreement, whether it's explicitly in there or not, I presume it is, would be contingent on, uh, approval by, um, a planning board to cite it. So, um.
Hasn't been, it's, this, so this is the lease agreement. So this, this hasn't been, when it, this was determined back in March. It was just being addressed. We had, we didn't step into anything legally at that point?
My own, again, and I, I think it has to be made part of the evidence that's submitted based on what the bylaw says. But my understanding is there is a lease agreement, um, that would allow them to, to lease that and the terms of that lease agreement are in there. Um, but, you know, it's, it's sort of functionally irrelevant if you don't have a special permit to put that there. Um, I assume there's, there's probably language in a lease agreement that would, that would make that moot.
But, but that land does have that special permit in regards to it, correct?
It, it doesn't, that's what we're here for. I mean, it's to, is whether they get a special permit to put up that cell tower or not.
Okay.
They have, and it's probably years ago that they did a lease agreement, but I could be wrong, but they, they, they have a lease agreement with the town to allow them to put something there if they're given the permits to do so. Um, you know, a conditional, uh, um, lease agreement, basically. That the condition has to be satisfied before it becomes operative.
Okay.
And that's right, Mr. Chairman, that the lease was signed September of 19.
Oh, it wasn't that long. Okay. I thought it was longer than that, but, um, uh, okay. So, um, anything else, uh, from a procedural standpoint?
Just one more thing, Mike. The, the wireless site map.
Yeah.
Is dated 2001. I bought my home and I was their third house on Lexington Circle in 2002. So think of that.
So.
That land, when it was deemed acceptable for this type of technology, didn't have the 150, you know, homes, uh, paying extremely high real estate tax.
All right. So let me, and again, that's.
So again, it's just, it just puts more gray into this, this entire equation.
Right.
I just wanted to add.
Let's defer the substance and I, I, what, what I will do, you know, that sort of reminded me in, in what I sort of post on Facebook as general information about this, what I will try to do is include a link to the GIS. So if people wanna go to that and click on, uh, the wireless overlay district, they can kind of see it, um, on there because I think that would be helpful. Um, and it's not easy, obviously, now to go to Town Hall and look at the map that's sitting over there. So, but it is accessible online, uh, and you can see it. I'll, I'll try to put that link up there. Um, all right. So with that, I, I think we'll, um, I think we'll continue this on. Do I hear a motion to continue the hearing until?
Yeah, very quick, very quickly, Mike.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yep.
Mike, Pete Flynn, I've, I've been here all the while. Uh, you already have my thoughts. You've, you've, feel free to share them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, um, do I hear a motion to continue this public hearing to 7:15 on October 20th of 2020?
So, Marcus Phelps.
Do I hear a second?
Dave Spina, second.
Okay, uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Uh, Dick?
I think Dick might have left.
Okay, um.
Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thor, an aye.
Okay. All right. So, uh, folks, that'll, we will pick this up on, uh, 7:15 on October 20th.
Thank you very much.
Everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Uh, let's see what we need to finish up if anything here. Um.
You're getting the sudden motion in five minutes.
Surprised I haven't gotten it already. All right.
All we have left are the minutes, right?
Yeah, you know what? If you don't mind, can we defer that? I got behind and I actually do have some comments, um, including, and I don't know if they got changed. I, I just, it's just, I've been a bit hectic. Um, um, I know I had a few things that were somewhat substantive, including I think just making sure that Spina's name is on there um, as being present because I think that was missing on the last one I looked at. Um, but if we can just defer that to the next meeting and we'll, we'll probably just deal with it early on rather than at the end. Um, if that's okay with folks. Uh, that way, so that we're not sitting here and I can tell you what the changes are and we have to spend another 15, 20 minutes going through it. I think that's probably a worthwhile endeavor. Um, um, hold on, I'm sorry. Let me just pull up the agenda here. Was there anything else on there?
Mike, I've got, there's a couple of applications that are coming through. Should I just, should I just hold them off?
Um, what are they?
Well, the one is the McDonald's restaurant. They wanna put the extra turning lane on the inside of the parking lot. It's a modification to the site plan. They only, right now they have one ordering vestibule and they want to have two because traffic is backed out onto College Highway.
All right.
And I postponed, I postponed them and told them it wouldn't be fair for them to sit through three hours of dissertation.
Um,
I just, I mean.
The modification, so it needs the two weeks of advertising. Um.
No, it's just, no, it's site plan approval.
Oh, just site plan, wait, what is it doing again? Oh, no, you're right. Never mind, never mind. Yep, yep.
There's already a site plan. There's no change. It's just a.
It's just, yep.
Putting some more lines down and putting in another squawk box to talk to your order.
Yep, no, that, I'm sorry. Yep. Um, so why don't we try to, um, you know, we, we have time, but let's just, let's, let's tentatively plan on throwing that on first on the um, third, November 3rd, is that whatever the next one is?
November 10th is the only meeting we have in November.
Yeah, so it'd be the 10th. Um, so why don't we tentatively plan on putting it on first on that one? But let's just see how next, the 20th goes. Um, but let's tentatively plan on, because that's not gonna take that long.
No, not at all.
So let's tentatively plan on that. Um, and I expect we'll do it because I think that's, you know, I mean, there's some safety issue there and it's a pretty quick one. So let's just try to get that done.
Okay.
Anything else?
Time to go to bed.
All right. If you guys, you know, whatever, uh, Sutton already is asleep, I think. All right.
Put him back in.
All right. So why don't we have the, um, uh, Dave Sutton honorary motion?
Make a motion to close the meeting.
Uh, do I hear a second?
Dave Spina, second.
All right. Uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thor, an aye.
All right. Thank you.